Mr. Udine is ready.
I see that.
He says answer on his heart.
We can begin.
Okay, that's all right. Please Director Deutsch. I pledge allegiance to the plan. And to the record for which it stands.
One nation, one nation. Indelible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Director Deutsch. Thank you Mr. Mayor. Director, if you'd like to, just in reading the opening statement for meeting, that would be appreciated.
Commissioners, planning board staff, ladies and gentlemen, I call this meeting of July 15th, 2020 to order. I hereby state that all the provisions of the state of New Jersey public open meeting law have been fully and completely met, that the notice of provisions required have been properly posted in the planning board office and with the city of Patterson clerk, that the public notice and advertisements have been published in the Herald News on July 4th, 2020 in accordance with the law and that the copies of such notice and public advertisements are on file in the planning board office. As is also the agenda listing, the applicants will be taken up by the planning board at this meeting. The procedure tonight will be in accordance with the rules, regulations and bylaws as herein before determined by the planning board and its office at 125 Ellison Street, the city of Patterson. First we'll have reorganization. Roll call please.
Commissioners. Commissioner Ahmed.
Ahmed.
Commissioner Brooks.
Here.
Commissioners De Vallos.
Here.
Commissioner Cleves.
Present.
Commissioner Santana.
She's up there.
Commissioner Isa. You cannot attend the meeting this evening. Commissioner Udine.
Here.
Commissioner Witherspoon.
Present.
Councilman Vales.
Present.
And Commissioner Northrop.
Yes, and Commissioner De Vallos.
Commissioner De Vallos. That's what I called her. Thank you.
Commissioner Fisher, is he in attendance?
I don't see him here.
I don't either.
Name, I saw his name.
Yeah, I see Fisher. I see Fisher.
He's waiting.
Commissioner Fisher, are you there sir?
Yes, I am.
Thank you.
You see me?
Yes, I do now.
Waiting.
Ah, anyway.
I now turn this meeting over to Mayor Seo.
Thank you Director Deutsch. Welcome once again everyone. Encouraged to see that we have almost 100% participation in fact. I believe we have 100% participation this evening. At this time, I'm going to call for a nomination for chairperson. So the floor is now open for that nomination.
I would like to make a nomination.
Yes, I recognize Commissioner Sonia Santana.
Yeah, I'd like to, um, I'll show my, Northrop, to be the chairperson and board.
Same. Okay, so it was nominated by Commissioner Santana and seconded by everyone, I believe, or almost everyone.
Yeah.
Are there any other nominations for chairperson?
I'm sorry, didn't you hear the second, the second motion?
There were several people that seconded the motion. Actually, I actually did.
Harry De Vallos, I thought I heard him second, but I can't.
He's got a very distinct voice, it may have been him.
Mayor, for the record, it was, uh, Commissioner Fisher, De Vallos, myself, and I believe somebody else.
Thank you.
So, are there any other nominations for chairperson? Seeing, seeing another, at this time, I'd like to call for a motion to oppose the nomination process.
Second.
Moved by?
Councilman Vales.
No, you said second, didn't you?
Oh, sorry.
Just in case somebody say first.
Okay. Alright, so Councilman Vales moved it, who's going to second it?
Second.
Second by Harry De Vallos. Roll call Maggie. To close the nomination.
Commissioners, Commissioner Ahmed.
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks. Commissioner Brooks. Commissioners De Vallos.
Yes.
Commissioner Cleves.
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher.
Yes.
Commissioner Udine.
Yes.
Commissioner Witherspoon.
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Thank you. Um, Commissioner Santana.
Yes.
Councilman Vales.
Yes.
And Commissioner Northrop, Chairwoman Northrop.
Yes.
Thank you and congratulations.
Okay, thank you very much.
We're going to have to have a roll call, that was to close the nomination, and let's have a roll call on the nomination of Janice Northrop for chairperson of the Patterson Planning Board.
Commissioners, Commissioner Ahmed.
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner De Vallos.
Yes.
Commissioner Cleves.
I abstain.
Commissioner Fisher.
Yes.
Commissioner Udine.
Yes.
Commissioner Witherspoon.
Yes.
Commissioner Santana.
Yes.
Councilman Vales.
Um, yes.
And Commissioner Northrop.
Yes.
Thank you.
Was it Sally Maggie?
It's, uh, ten for approval, one abstained.
Very good. Congratulations, Madam Chairwoman.
Thank you very much Mayor, I appreciate that.
At this time, I'd like to call for a nomination for Vice Chairperson of the Patterson Planning Board.
Roll call the nomination.
Who, who is, yes.
Councilman Vales.
Councilman?
I want to call Commissioner Fisher to be Vice President of the Board.
Second.
Okay, moved by Councilman Vales, seconded by Commissioner Kopier Ahmed, did I hear that correctly? My WebEx listening skills are improving rapidly here. Okay. So it's been moved and seconded. Are there any other nominations for Vice Chairperson?
Yes, I'd like to make a nomination for, uh, for Commissioner Santana.
Okay, is there a second? In our room. Seconded by Commissioner Harry De Vallos, and I think I heard someone else, was it? Okay, well, it's been moved and seconded by Jan Northrop and seconded by Harry De Vallos. They have a motion to oppose the nomination.
So moved.
Moved by Jan Northrop, seconded by? This is just to close the nomination process.
Second.
Seconded by Harry De Vallos. Roll call Maggie on closing the nomination process.
Thank you. Commissioners, Commissioner Ahmed.
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner De Vallos.
Yes.
Commissioner Cleves.
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher.
Yes.
Commissioner E, uh, Udine.
Yes.
Commissioner Witherspoon.
Yes.
Commissioner Santana.
Yes.
Councilman Vales.
Yes.
And Chairwoman Northrop.
Yes.
Thank you.
Maggie, let's have a roll call on the first nomination for Vice Chairperson, Mark Fisher.
Commissioners, Commissioner Ahmed.
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner De Vallos.
Okay, let's have a vote now, we're here for a minute.
Excuse me?
Yeah, I think there's two nominations, which one we voting for?
I, I do understand that, so this is.
I stated Mark Fisher. I stated that. Proceed Maggie.
Thank you sir. I'm, I'm losing my, my train of thought here, I'm so sorry.
Harry De Vallos, Commissioner De Vallos.
De Vallos, yes or no?
Yes.
Commissioner Cleves.
I abstain.
Commissioner Fisher. Commissioner Fisher, yes. Commissioner Udine. Commissioner Udine.
Yes, yes.
Commissioner Witherspoon.
Did you hear me?
Yes. Commissioner Witherspoon, Councilman Vales, Commissioner Santana.
Yes.
Okay, and Commissioner Northrop.
I abstain.
Thank you.
Maggie, was it Sally?
Seven, four, and one abstained, two abstained.
Seven, empty, right.
Three, four, five, six, seven.
I believe there's only one no vote and abstained. Am I right then?
Seven, seven affirmative, one a no vote, and two abstained.
No, who abstained?
Commissioner Cleves.
Right, Commissioner Cleves, self, that's right.
And yourself.
That's right.
So, seeing there is a majority, there's no need to proceed with the nomination.
That's correct.
Congratulations Vice Chairperson.
Congratulations. Congratulations Mark.
Thank you Mayor, happy to serve you.
Thank you. So, I want to not only congratulate once again our Chairperson and our Vice Chairperson, but I also want to welcome aboard our newest Commissioners, Crystal Cleaves and Kori Udine. All the bond.
Welcome.
Education. And I want to reiterate to all the returning Commissioners that we are focused on growth. And although the pandemic forced us to press the pause button, business the city must proceed and development must take place. As Director Deutsch, Maggie and Alak will be able to attest, this planning board in the first few years has seen a tremendous amount of activity. And as we press the reset button on our city, we want to let you know that what drives my vision is the fact that we are going to grow our economy here. And it starts with this particular board. It's all about planning and ultimately seeing all of this come to fruition. They're still interested in investing in Patterson even though COVID-19 created a crisis situation for our planning. The planning board, irrespective of this pandemic, is going to make sure that Patterson is put back on the map. So I salute all of you for wanting to serve. I appreciate the fact that you're giving us your time and your talent. And remember what the focus is, it's on growth. What we're doing at the Great Hall, what we're doing with Hinchcliffe Stadium, what we're planning to do in downtown and our other commercial corridors for this South Patterson, or what I believe has a lot of potential on Union Avenue, Bangladesh Boulevard. You know, for Kori and Kopier. So, we are one Patterson, focused on one purpose. And that is to develop our city. Thank you, and at this time, I turn the meeting over to our recently re-elected Chairperson, Jan Northrop.
Thank you very much Mayor. And thank you everyone for your support, I appreciate it. Congratulations, Commissioner Fisher, Vice Chair. And at this time, and at this time, I think I'd like to, um, we're going to start, um, uh, I'm going to talk to, um, Madam Secretary. Um, I want to read the notice, uh, put out by the Governor first, correct?
Um, I think we should first do the, the reorganization.
Yes, I'm sure.
Okay.
So, um, can now select a court reporter secretary and ward attorney.
Correct, okay, so I think you.
After each one, I will read the resolution into the record.
Okay, well, I'm going, um, I would like to make a motion to, um, continue with Amalinda Lopez as the court stenographer. I make a motion that we keep her on as the court stenographer. Can I have a second?
Move.
Second by Commissioner Vales? By Councilman Vales?
Yes, yes.
Okay, roll call please.
Commissioners, Commissioner Ahmed. Commissioner Brooks.
Yes, 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 yes.
Commissioner De Vallos.
Yes.
Commissioner Cleves.
Um, I'm abstaining.
Commissioner Fisher.
Yes.
Commissioner Udine. Commissioner Udine.
Yes.
Commissioner Witherspoon.
Yes.
Commissioner Santana.
Yes.
Commissioner Vales.
Uh, yes.
And Chairwoman Northrop.
Yes. Okay.
Congratulations, Amalinda Lopez.
That's right, Amalinda, um, yeah, well, to, um, I want to open the, um, I'm going to make a motion to reappoint, um,
Excuse me ma'am, read the resolution into the record, Greg.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Resolution of the Planning Board of the City of Patterson regarding the appointment of a certified court reporter. Whereas the Planning Board of the City of Patterson requires the services of a certified court reporter with regular meetings and special meetings. And whereas the Planning Board of the City of Patterson has the right and authority to designate, appoint and retain a certified court reporter as per the zoning and development ordinance, section 200 dash 2.1, adopted March 2006.
Nothing personal, because you donated to my campaign.
I'm sorry sir, I'm, I'm reading the resolution.
See, I abstain is because, uh, you donated to my campaign, I don't want nobody saying that you donated.
Councilman Vales, you are on the microphone, sir, shut your microphone off please. Won't say hi.
Oh, good so.
Can you please mute your microphone?
Oh, is that I get used to, they shut it down, okay, alright.
Right, because I hear your conversation sir. Uh, let me continue, uh, where was I, section 200, 2.1, adopted March 2006 for the purposes, duties and responsibilities herein set forth. Now therefore be resolved that Amalinda Lopez, CCR of Hey Lopez Court Reporters LLC, is hereby appointed and retained as a court reporter for the planning board for one year period commencing July 1st, 2020 and ending June 30th, 2021 at an annual salary of $10,350. Be it further resolved that Amalinda Lopez's duties will be to attend all regular meetings and special meetings to the planning board to provide a suitable substitute for any regular meeting or special meeting. She is unable to attend, to make a record of all proceedings before the planning board to prepare and furnish suitable minutes of the board's actions as well as prepare verbatim transcripts of any proceedings required by a participant in a proceeding before the board at the expense of such person. In addition to the regular meetings, a court reporter shall attend all special meetings and will be compensated for staying also separate and apart and in addition to her other compensation. This is your resolution Commissioners and Madam Chair.
Thank you. And so at this time, I want to, um, make a motion that we reappoint Maggie Vega as the Secretary of the Planning Board. Do I have a second?
Second, second, second.
Second, was that by Commission, was that by Councilman Vales?
Yes, De Vallos.
Okay, Councilman, okay, I'm sorry, Commissioner De Vallos, okay, roll call please.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioners, Commissioner Ahmed.
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner De Vallos.
Yes, yes.
Commissioner Cleves.
Abstain.
Commissioner Udine. Commissioner Udine. I don't hear your, your, my is off.
Sorry, that was muted, yes, I'm here.
Thank you Commissioner Udine. Commissioner Fisher.
Yes.
Commissioner Witherspoon. Commissioner Witherspoon. Commissioner Santana.
Yes.
Commissioner Witherspoon. Commissioner Witherspoon has left the meeting. Commissioner, Councilman Vales.
Yes.
And Chairwoman Northrop.
Yes, congratulations Maggie, please read into the record the, um, the resolution.
Thank you. Resolution of the Planning Board of the City of Patterson regarding the appointment and compensation of a secretary. Whereas the Planning Board of the City of Patterson requires the services of a secretary for office assistance and attendance at its regular meetings pursuant to the city ordinance 200 dash 2.1. And whereas the city planning director and principal planner requires assistance on administrative matters in carrying out the planning and zoning divisions duties under the city's administrative code and the New Jersey municipal land use law to the planning board. And wherein the planning board of the City of Patterson has the right and authority to appoint and retain a secretary for the purposes, duties and responsibilities herein set forth below. And now therefore be resolved that Margaret Vega is hereby appointed as the secretary for the planning board for one year period commencing July 1st, 2020 and ending June 30th, 2021. And her salary stipend is fixed at $6,221 for performing her duties at the regular meetings of the planning board. Is in addition to the salary she receives for her duties performed during business hours at the Division of Planning and Zoning. And be it further resolved that Margaret Vega's duties will be among others to attend all regular meetings of the planning board to keep a record of each hearing for other official action of the board, call, roll call and report the vote of each member of the board at the meetings and perform other duties required by the board. These services performed at the board's meetings are in addition to the secretarial services performed during the regular business hours of the Division of Planning and Zoning. And the salary for staying is in addition to the compensation she receives for her daily work. In addition to the regular meetings, a secretary shall attend all special meetings that will be compensated for staying, all full separate and apart and in addition to her other compensation. This, uh, resolution was moved, seconded and approved by all Commissioners. This is your resolution Commissioners and Madam Chair.
Thank you. Do we need one for, um, Michael George as the planner?
No. No, we do not.
Alright, so we don't need, so we don't need that and, uh, and, uh, Mr., uh, and Mr. Aquaviva was reappointed, correct?
No, we have to vote him in.
So we got to hear that now?
Yes ma'am.
Of course. Okay, so, I make a motion that we reappoint Mr. Aquaviva, L. Aquaviva as our attorney for the planning board. Do I have a second?
Sure.
Next by Commissioner De Vallos, okay, roll call please.
Commissioners, Commissioner Ahmed.
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner De Vallos.
Yes.
Commissioner Cleves. Commissioner Cleves. Okay, come back, uh, abstain. Excuse me? Okay. I think she said she abstained, am I correct?
I think you're right.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Fisher?
Of course.
Commissioner Santana?
Yes.
Commissioner Udine? I don't hear you sir. Commissioner Udine, I can't hear you. I'm having trouble hearing him.
Everybody is.
I know, but I have to hear it, yes, I can't hear it.
I think it's important that everybody stay near their phones and, and when this is all going on, because I think maybe sometimes people might step away for a moment, but we have to continue with the meeting.
No, I, I just, I understand, but in a reorganization meeting, no one should be leaving.
I, I don't.
Commissioner Udine? Alright, um, he says yes, I could see him? Am I allowed to accept this, Mr. Aquaviva? Because I can't hear him?
Yeah, I didn't, he's giving a thumbs up right now, so I think he's indicating that.
We accept that as a yes.
I need to verbalize it.
I know, we need it on the record. Uh, Mr. Udine, can you try your computer somehow? Come back to you, Commissioner Witherspoon?
Yes.
Uh, Councilman Vales?
Uh, abstain.
Abstained?
Ye- yes.
Commissioner Udine? I don't know, he's having a shit.
I never, he said yes.
You heard him?
Yes.
Said yes.
Okay, okay.
You got it Amalinda? Okay, Commissioner Udine, since you're having some difficulty, I need you to call in. Okay, because we can't hear you. It's on your end, so it has to be your microphone or something's disconnected, so check it out for me, thank you. Uh, Chairwoman Northrop?
Yes.
Thank you. Eight, eight affirmative, two abstained.
Okay, so that's, it's done, it's done.
Thank you.
Okay, so yes, congratulations, Mr. Aquaviva.
Congratulations.
Yes.
Yeah, but we need to leave, that's here, uh, uh, yeah, correct.
That's how many of them might be, for everyone to finish speaking. I would like to read into the record the resolution of the planning board. Um, I would appreciate if everybody would mute their microphones because it does interfere with my, with my, on my end. Uh, whereas the planning board of the City of Patterson requires the services of an attorney at law for advice, consultation and attendance at its regular meetings and workshop meetings. And whereas the city planning director and principal planner requires the working days on relationship with the planning board attorney on technical, administrative matters and carrying out the planning and zoning divisions duties under the city's administrative code and the New Jersey municipal land use law to the planning board. And whereas the planning board of the City of Patterson has the right and authority to designate, appoint and retain an attorney at law of the state of New Jersey for the purposes, duties and responsibilities herein set forth. And now therefore be resolved that Alfred V. Aquaviva Esquire of the firm of Aquaviva Law Offices LLC is hereby appointed and retained as the attorney for the Patterson Planning Board for a one-year period commencing July 1st, 2020 and ending June 30th, 2021 at an annual salary of $20,000. There will be no pension or medical benefits included in this appointment. Be it further resolved that Alfred V. Aquaviva's duties will be among others to attend all regular meetings and workshop meetings of the planning board to provide a suitable substitute for any regular meeting or workshop meeting she, he is unable to attend, my apologies. To provide legal advice on regular matters coming with the planning board. To prepare memorializing resolutions on all board determinations on application to provide research and assistance on special matters which the planning board may require to be addressed. Uh, to prepare developers' appointments at matters being litigated with the charge for such services when, um, directed by the planning board to be separate and apart from his annual salary and shall be submitted to the planning board on an individual case by case itemized basis. In addition to the regular meetings, the board attorney shall attend all special meetings that will be compensated for staying, all. that will be compensated for same, also separate and apart, and in addition to other compensation. This is your resolution, Commissioners and Madam Chair. Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I may, Madam Chair?
Madam Chair.
If, if I may, I just want to say thank you to the Board on, um, nominating me again, and it's been an honor and a pleasure to serve as this Board, and I look forward to the coming year to work with this Board for the development of this, of this city. Thank you again.
Okay, Commissioners and, excuse me?
Uh, what's wrong?
All right, we, we have to adopt the. Excuse me, Councilman Vellis, let me finish, please, sir. I'd like to have the calendar approved for two thousand and twenty and two thousand and twenty-one. Uh, Commissioner, uh, Councilman, uh, Chairwoman Northrop, can we, uh, get the zoning, take the motion?
I would like to, but I haven't seen the, uh, I have not seen the, um.
I emailed everyone.
Yeah, I did, unfortunately, I did not get that. But I would.
If you want to pass the motion, fine, but the agenda, it's, it's here, it has to be approved, so anyone else would like to?
Somebody else would like to?
Thank you.
Okay. Second by Commissioner Vellis. Okay, roll call please.
Commissioners, Commissioner Santana?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner Ahmed?
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Savalos?
Yes.
Commissioner Klees? Commissioner Klees? I'll return. Commissioner Fisher? Commissioner Fisher?
Yes, I do get back on, sorry.
Thank you. Um, if anyone is leaving the podium, please tell me before you leave.
No, I didn't leave. My internet, my internet went down.
All right, I'm just speaking on behalf for everyone.
Okay, no problem.
Commissioner Udine? Commissioner Udine?
I think he was gonna call in.
All right, he's gonna call in. Commissioner Witherspoon?
Is he, is he better, is he better now? Can you hear me now?
I hear you now, miss. Can you, uh, vote yes for the calendar?
I'm in the board, and, um, yeah, complete the.
Thank you. Councilman Vellis? Yes, on the calendar?
Yes, on the calendar.
Uh, Commiss, Commissioner Klees? Commissioner Klees? Um, I'm just going to pass that up, and I'm gonna go to Chairwoman Northrop.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, um, you can continue now, Chairwoman, with the agenda.
So the agenda for the reorganization and regular meetings, I'm gonna read the, um, the notice pursuant to the Open Public Records Act addressing the fact of coronavirus measures on the next public meeting, consistent with the coronavirus-related restrictions of Executive Order Number one zero seven, given on Saturday, March twenty-first, two thousand and twenty by Governor Philip D. Murphy. The Planning Board of the City of Patterson will not conduct in-person participation of the public at all future meetings until further notice. However, public participation will be available by means of communication equipment pursuant to NJSA ten, call in four dash eight, commencing on April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty. Um, though there may potentially be a practical need for a limited number of administrative, technical, or other city personnel to be present in or near the City Council chambers, third floor, City Hall, one fifty-five Marcus Street, Patterson, New Jersey, in-person participation of the public is prohibited. Nevertheless, for reasons of compliance with the said Executive Order Number one zero seven, public particip- participation will be available by calling nine seven three, three two one, one five seven nine, meeting ID number seven one one six eight zero, zero zero seven one. Planning Board reorganization, regular meeting on Wednesday, July fifteenth, two thousand and twenty at six P. M. On the date and time that the meeting is scheduled to commence, the public may also participate in the meeting by accessing the website of the City of Patterson, www.pattersonnj.gov, and following the email link to the meeting, www.pattersonnj.gov slash planningboard. So on this Wednesday, July fifteenth, there's going to be two applications that we will be hearing this evening. Um, Mr. Deutsch, which one did you want to go with first? Do you have a preference?
Um, Mr. Marakanda, are you there?
Mr. Mar, just, I don't see Mr. Mar.
Mr. Deutsch, Madam Chair. We're here. Sheet if we made with fifty, fifty-three Carroll Street.
Okay, so Mr. Deutsch, you want to start with the Carroll Street?
Yes. Hey, Madam Chair.
Yes, who's that?
Uh, that's, that's Councilman Vellis. I'm trying to call the attention from way back, and, um, um, if you allow me to, uh, request a motion for, um, or request something for the Board to the Chair, is possible?
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, uh, um, I was reading, I was listening to all the appointments and, um, and approval of train, if it's, if it's possible, as, uh, this Board keep on moving forward, uh, to create a resolution, either the Board to present it to the City Council, uh, to increase, uh, the salary of the secretary and all the individuals on board and, um, in board, you know, on, on board on the Board, uh, uh, to move forward to see if they could get a little bit more compensation for the hard work that this Board has been doing for a lot of years, and, uh, and their, and their, um, compensation had not been touched. If the Board passed a resolution, uh, naming that, we, the Council will should obtain, uh, that, uh, salary increase source for, for, for the secretary, for the, um, for what individual that was appointed today. So, uh, taking consideration that, uh, to draft a, um, a resolution, uh, to approve a, a, a little bit of extra money for those positions, because I know that you guys worked so hard, and overtime too, and it had to be compensated, especially when the Board had increased the fee and, uh, fees in the level of the city, uh, that you could get compensated in the other side too.
Are you talking about the entire, um, compensation that the Board members?
True, correct.
Commissioners make, as well as the secretary, and the, uh, the, uh, the boot stenographer?
Correct. Everybody that is in the Board get compensated at some point or on. Uh, and I will recommend that that resolution, uh, uh, graph how much you, you want, uh, you know, pursue for, uh, and for example, I think, uh, Commissioner gets something from the college, should he pursue to, uh, one fifty, um, I think the, uh, whatever it is, sit down as the Board pass a resolution, uh, what you guys wanted to reason, and we could obtain it in the Council. Also, you could, uh, back, get a fight going legal, uh, in more access to see how far you can go in that, in that aspect.
Ma- Madam Chair?
Yes, Dr. Aquaviva.
Councilmember Vellis, uh, certainly, um, we, we thank you for your consideration. I, I, I don't pretend to speak for the Board, but I'm, I'm pretty certain that the Board is, um, is thankful for you opening that recommendation and bringing that up before the Board. Um, first, before I say anything, uh, Madam Secretary, you, you have, you have made an announcement several times tonight, and I think, um, Chairperson, Chair, Chairperson Northrop, you've made an announcement several times tonight. Everyone, please, if you're not speaking, mute your microphones.
Right.
Because every, everything that is going on in the background is magnified, and you can't hear each other speak, and quite frankly, it hinders this Board from conducting a meeting tonight expeditiously, and it also prejudices, prejudices this Board from hearing things that need to be heard, so please, mute your microphones when you're not speaking, turn your televisions down, whatever the case may be, please do all that you can to do that. Um, Councilmember Vellis, as a matter of order, um, the Board cannot adopt a resolution like you're requesting. What the Board can do is construct a letter to the Council recommending or requesting that certain salary increases, um, be enacted and a requested amount. It would then be up to a Council member to make that, um, uh, open that up for discussion before your very, your own City Council meeting entertained discussion, and then it would we, be, it would move forward from there, but certainly, um, this is something that would be discussed, and procedurally, a letter, if so, would be written to the Council, and it would be taken up by a Council member who wants to actually do that, so, um, I, I certainly thank you for that consideration.
Okay, saying that, uh, because I represent the City, uh, Council, uh, in this Board, uh, you could drive that letter towards me, and I will make the necessary, uh, uh, recommendation to, uh, the City, uh, uh, but you have to make the request. I will wait for that letter and, uh, stand by it, or everyone that had to be here.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, Madam Secretary, we can, we can discuss this administratively. Um, it doesn't really be made part of a public meeting as far as tonight goes, but we can discuss it administratively, and then it's going to be taken up by the Council.
That's right. Okay. Okay, thank you very much, uh, for the, for the comments. Let me, uh, just move forward with this now. So, we're going to go into the, um, fifty-one dash fifty-three Carroll Street LLC, block three two one one, lots four four and four five. Uh, Mr. Marakanda, you are there, correct?
Yes, we are here. Alan Marakanda of seven twenty-six Marcus Street Patterson, on behalf of the applicant. Uh, here to speak with Mr. Bleeker as our architect planner, and our applicant is also available as well.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so the applicant proposes to merge lots forty-four and forty-five and remove the existing concrete and macadam parking areas, and construct a new four-story residential building with a total of twelve units and one commercial space. The basement proposes a utility room, elevator, maintenance room, and a stairwell. First floor proposes one thousand, two hundred and twenty-four square feet commercial space, a lobby with an elevator and a stairwell. Eight off-street parking spaces area also proposed in addition to a secondary stairwell. The second through fourth floors each proposes four two-bedroom units on each floor. The roof plan indicates thirty-eight hundred square feet of sitting and terrace area. The parcel has area of five thousand square feet and is located on the northeast corner of Governor Street and Carroll Street. This proposal is within the RA dash two zone of the fourth ward redevelopment plan. Variance is requested for the following. Front yard setback as a minimum of three feet is required and zero feet is proposed on both Governor Street and Carroll Street. Side yard setback as a minimum of five feet is required and zero feet is provided. Rear yard setback as a minimum of twenty feet is required and zero feet is proposed. Number of building stories as a three-and-a-half story building is permitted and four-story building is proposed. Maximum building coverage as sixty percent building coverage is permitted and ninety percent building coverage is proposed. Maximum impervious coverage as eighty percent impervious coverage is permitted and one hundred percent building coverage is proposed. And parking as eighteen off-street parking spaces are required and eight off-street parking spaces are, are proposed. Uh, requires site plan approval and bulk variances, and at this time, I'd like to ask Mr. Deutsch to give us his review, please. Mr. Deutsch?
Yes, can you hear me?
Now I can, yes. Please give us your review.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, please give us, please give us your review. Thank you.
Property taxes and sewer charges are current. Persons having a ten percent or greater ownership interest in fifty-one dash fifty-three Carroll Street LLC are Aaron Melvin, providing an address of two seventy West eighty-fourth Street, New York, New York. As indicated on the lot consolidation plan prepared by DMC Associates and dated October third, two thousand and nineteen, the parcel has frontage of fifty feet in a Carroll Street, additional frontage of one hundred feet in a Governor Street, and side and rear yards of fifty feet and one hundred feet. Currently, both lots of area have two thousand, five hundred square feet. Combined, the parcels have proposed area of five thousand square feet or point twelve acres. The parcel has the remains of concrete walls, foundations, and macadam pavement. Carroll Street is a two-way directional street in a northern and southern direction, and Governor Street is a one-way street in a westerly direction. Bleeker Architectural Group has prepared a nine-page architectural submittal dated October twenty-first, two thousand and nineteen. The title page indicates the location plan, the zoning ordinance data, and notes. During SP one point zero zero indicates the two-hundred-foot radius map of adjacent properties. During SP two point oh oh is the proposed layout plan. This proposal is located at the northeast corner of the intersection of Carroll Street and Governor Street. The applicant proposes to remove the existing concrete and asphalt surface and construct a four-story mixed-use building. The interior access into the building is proposed from Governor Street from a twenty-two-foot drop curb and apron. During SP three is the drainage plan and provides stormwater calculations and drainage facility details. During SP four is the soil erosion plan. The SP five is the site details, showing the sanitary sewer connection, water connections, concrete vertical curb, and roadway pavement widening, seater section, depressed driveway, reserved parking sign, and pavement striping. During A point one indicates the four building elevations. The Governor Street elevation indicates an access point into the retail space and access into the parking garage. Building is composed of brick and structural materials and windows on all floor. The Carroll Street elevation indicates two access floors into the first four retail space and three floors of residential units above. There's also a staircase leading to a second access point into the building. The proposed rear elevation indicates the first floor open parking area and the solid rear of the building with no windows. Left side elevation is visible from Carroll Street and indicates the secondary staircase. The applicant should explain how access into the garage will be obtained and where security cameras will be installed. Specific questions about the exterior facade and the address to the architect at the public area. Aquicite lighting shall be installed, and details of exterior lighting fixtures shall be provided. During A two indicates the basement and first floor plan. A partial basement with square footage, a four-hundred-and-twenty-square acre is to include a utility room and a, and elevator pit and a stairwell. First floor plan includes the entry lobby, a mailbox area, and elevator, two stairwells, and the eight-spaced parking area, which includes one handicap parking space. The lobby entrance is from Governor Street. The commercial space contains one thousand, five hundred and twenty-four square feet and is accessible from Carroll Street and Governor Street. The A two also indicates the second floor plan. Four two-bedroom units are located on the second floor. Units have sizes of eight hundred, eight hundred ninety-nine point two four, eight hundred ninety-nine point two seven, nine hundred and thirty-two point seven seven, and nine hundred and thirty-two point seven nine square feet. Each unit has a laundry facility, a kitchen, a living room, two bedrooms, a walk-in closet, and a full bathroom. The applicant has gotten advised that trash and recycling will be stored and handled. The indicated parking spaces are the required nine feet in width and eighteen feet in length, and the driveway aisle informs to the minimum twenty-four foot width. During A three is the proposed third and fourth floor plan and the proposed roof plan. The third and fourth floor plans are identical in layout. Each floor has four two-bedroom units per floor. All units contain a full bathroom, a combined kitchen dining and living area, and laundry facilities in addition to the bedrooms. The rooftop terrace indicates three thousand eight hundred square feet and includes greenery and sitting areas. The only building amenity space that is proposed is on the rooftop terrace. The left side of the building, as viewed from Carroll Street, will be on the property line and approximately five feet from existing older four-story building that has windows on each floor, and will be the approximate height as a proposed building. The building has a proposed height of forty-two feet. The intent of the RA dash two residential district of the fourth ward redevelopment plans is to permit a more intensive residential use of land with various types of dwellings. Mixed-use development, which includes residential and neighborhood commercial uses, are permitted as corners of blocks. According to the plans, the commercial space may be divided into several units. Each unit requires its own restroom. Each unit requires its own restroom. The applicant should advise on the record if there are any types of businesses that they would not lease to. Certificates of applicant's and/or zoning board approval is required prior to any commercial space occupancy. The applicant requests variances for the following conditions for this proposed twelve-unit structure. Front yard setback as a minimum of three feet is required and zero feet is proposed on both Governor Street and Carroll Street. Side yard setback as a minimum of five feet is required and zero feet is provided. Rear yard setback as a minimum of twenty feet is required and zero feet is proposed. Number of building stories as a three-and-a-half story building is permitted and a four-story building is proposed. Maximum building coverage as sixty percent building coverage is permitted and ninety percent building coverage is proposed. Maximum impervious coverage as eighty percent impervious coverage is permitted and one-hundred percent building coverage is proposed. And parking as eighteen off-street parking spaces are required and eight off-street parking spaces are proposed. One-and-a-half parking spaces are required for each of the twelve two-bedroom units. Eighteen parking spaces are required and eight parking spaces are provided. As this is a redevelopment area, the planning board must, must determine whether the granting of the requested variances to allow the number of two-bedroom units proposed by the applicant is appropriate for the lot and the immediate surrounding area. It shall be the responsibility of the applicant and/or the preparer of the plan to obtain a letter from the city engineer indicating that the plans have been satisfactorily reviewed prior to the plans being released to the construction official. Surrounding land use. This proposal is in the Ridley Park section of the city within the fourth ward redevelopment plan. The area is zoned residential with neighborhood commercial areas located at some corner intersections. The Inca Carroll Street housing is located on the northwest side of Carroll Street. Retail businesses are located on the southeast and southwest, southwest corners of Carroll Street and Governor Street. The area is seeing new residential construction of both two-family dwellings and larger multi-unit buildings. While the area is stable, a lack of new development may be hindering the area's economic opportunities. In conclusion, the applicant estimates the cost of this proposal at approximately two million dollars. The applicant, the applicant should incorporate the design elements contained within the fourth ward redevelopment plan on the site and within the building. Does your staff review for this proposal, Madam Chairwoman?
Chairwoman, I, I need you to come, unmute your mic. I don't think she hears you. Maggie, no, I just, I, I, I got kicked out? Yes. I don't know what that is.
Speaker?
No. No.
I think you should try again.
I am, I'm gonna do it now.
Jan, um, Chairwoman Northwood, you have to, uh, get out and go back in again.
Yep, gonna do it right now.
Thank you. It'll be a moment or two.
Okay. Can you hear me now? No. Okay, I gotta go back in. All right, let me go back in. This definitely has someone wrong.
Mr. Marakonda?
Yes, we're there.
Before you proceed, can you tell Mr. Bleeker to fix his plan in sideways?
Now, we will do what we can.
You can go to view and hit rotate? You're welcome. Yes. Yes, it's perfect.
Okay, fine. All right, I'm sorry for the, I don't know what happened. Well, it was like I got kicked off. Okay, so, um, we'll continue. Thank you for your review, Mr. Deutsch. Uh, Mr. Marakonda, please proceed.
Yes, thank you again, Madam Chair, and good evening, Commissioners, on behalf of the applicant. Fifty-one dash fifty-three Carroll Street LLC, uh, we're presenting a project to you this evening in the fourth ward redevelopment zone, which, as per Mr. Deutsch's report, uh, he highlights, I know, in the beginning, and as well as his conclusion, that this is the type of use that the redevelopment plan clearly encourages and wishes applicants to, um, make efforts, to strong efforts to develop, to revitalize the vacant parcels, particularly in the redevelopment zone. As the Commissioners know, this area is in, is in progress in terms of new development. There has been a great deal of effort of being put into the fourth ward. This, I think, will be another pivotal step in redeveloping that area and encouraging more progress in the surrounding, uh, streets as well. Uh, we know this is a difficult area. It has been, there has been a history of crime in the area, and we know that new positive residential and small service businesses are probably one of the best anecdotes towards that crime situation in the neighborhoods. Uh, this project, just by general overview, uh, will provide new quality housing, and according to the redevelopment plan conditions, in small service retail businesses, these are neighborhood businesses that are typical in the surrounding area. The redevelopment plan encourages this, and they will not conclude anything such as a liquor store or anything else that would cause any sort of detriment or negative impact in the surrounding area. Uh, so that being said, I'm gonna call Mr. Bleeker as our first witness. Thank you.
You're right here. Do you swear for our testimony, about to give us the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
You say your full name for the record.
John Bleeker. My office address is two seventy-five Belmont Avenue, Gildan and Gers.
Uh, Madam Chair, Bleeker, if you can, if you can support, uh, we should, if we, if any of those are confirmed, we're sorry.
No, no. Um, I have to go back on, I'm sorry. The acceptance is an extra away list. Sorry, I have a problem.
It appears to be Mr. Bleeker's home. I mean, computer.
Really? Well, I can't.
It stopped, it's just quiet now, as when I, uh, put him back on, it stopped.
And, and he went possibly to share that computer with, uh, Council Marakonda, maybe?
We, we are together, Mr. Bleeker and I, so I don't think there's any problem, but we'll check.
I had the IT technician tell me it is.
Can we try and proceed? You see what transpires?
Yes, you can proceed, it's good now.
Thank you, fine. Okay, so, Mr. Bleeker, uh, would you give us an overview of our site plan here with this, uh, application?
Uh, yes, I'd be glad to. As, uh, well, first off, um, with regards to Mr. Deutsch's report, uh, and Mr. Marakonda's description of the project, you know, both I can completely concur with, as being accurate, and, uh, I'm not gonna just reiterate all the details of each one of those, uh, reports or descriptions unless the Board would like to get into more detail, uh, but I'm just gonna give a quick overview. Unfortunately, uh, this site is on the corner of Carroll, Governor Street, uh, and I say unfortunately because it's been rather famous location recently. Uh, there's been multiple shootings, um, and it actually happened right in this location, uh, within the recent weeks, and I'm sure that, uh, we all, you know, know what they are. Uh, so I, as a planner, you know, definitely feel that this, this site needs being redeveloped. Uh, it's currently a vacant lot, uh, just used as a kind of a macadam parking area, uh, but obviously, there's nobody there, you know, living there, there's nobody, um, that, having any homeownership or even, uh, you know, apartment ownership there, and therefore I think that, um, you know, that this type of project, uh, would be contextual with the current existing four-story building that's right next to us on Carroll Street, but actually would help revive in this corner up and revitalize it, uh, with this new mixed-use combination, uh, project between the mixed-use residential, uh, as well as the commercial on the bottom level. Uh, right now, currently, um, you know, we can provide eight parking spaces at the bottom level in addition to the new commercial use, and then above that, um, there would be, uh, three stories of residential, uh, and above that residential, which is basically the roof terrace, uh, we're gonna fully develop as an outdoor recreation area for the residents, uh, something that is, you know, obviously very nice and expansive, and definitely provide enough outdoor recreation, uh, for the individuals on this property. We do, uh, note that we're actually seeking a number of variances, one of them being the service area coverage and the percentage coverage, but we are gonna retain all the rainwater that's gonna be, uh, generated from this building at the roof level, then recharge them into, new recharge pits, so that the water filter back into here naturally, uh, down at the parking level, uh, which apparently doesn't happen. Uh, basically, the rainwater just runs off this site, uh, and we're gonna recapture it, uh, so even though we're gonna scan a little bit on the coverage, uh, we do feel that environmentally, uh, we did the right, um, design, you know, that we can, uh, actually minimize any impact, and actually prevent any impact, uh, for any, any properties around this, as well as, uh, the street. Uh, we are on a curb location between Governor and Carroll Street, uh, and, um, that, that is actually, uh, an area that your redevelopment ordinance promotes very highly, the mixed-use combination, uh, which we're proposing on the project. Uh, we are proposing, uh, well, you know, four units per four, which would be two bedroom units, and each of the units will be in accordance to your, your ordinance in terms of square footage requirements, uh, and I do know that we have a three-and-a-half story requirement for our building height, and we are proposing four. Uh, we, we feel that that's a diminutive variance, uh, and we hope the Board agrees, uh, but again, you know, this building, if it's permitted and constructed the way it's designed, it would be actually the same size in terms of height as the building right next to us on Carroll Street, and therefore, we feel it would be very contextual. There are a few setback variances that we're asking for as well with this plan, uh, but from planning standpoint, we feel that that very advantageous, because we can maintain the street scape on both Carroll and Governor Street, uh, which we feel is very, very important, uh, and as the Board is very aware, uh, a lot of new projects that have been built within this area and in the fourth ward, uh, have contained those street sapes and actually really enhanced, uh, the look of the, the block as well as the neighborhood, and we want to continue that, uh, and we do feel that, um, those small variances that we're asking for for the front setback and the side setback, you know, would actually allow us to do that with this design and be contextual with some of the newer development that, that we see. Um, we are, we are gonna be providing a brand-new building, which is gonna obviously have new housing, uh, new adequate housing, as well as the housing that is gonna be developed, uh, in current code standards, so it will be all handicap access to all the units, the ADA access will be provided, uh, from ground level to the residential floors by an elevator, uh, and that elevator will go all the way up to the roof terrace, uh, so residents would be able to enjoy, uh, no matter what their disability may be, uh, full access to the building. Uh, we are obviously be installing security cameras throughout. Uh, security cameras will be focused not only on the interior of the building, but also on the parking level, any, any entrances, and also gonna be located shining out to the streets of both Governor and, um, Carroll, and primarily on the intersection as well. So, in the event there is any activity that's, uh, not advantageous, uh, it should be recorded within those cameras, and I think that would actually act as a big deterrent, uh, for some of the activity that we're seeing going on right now, uh, and probably help the police in, in assenting what, what happened and how quickly it happened, even though, you know, sometimes you don't get very good help from the public. So, uh, for those reasons, I do believe this will be a good, good thing. Uh, we have been involved in a number of projects, as the Board knows, in this ward, uh, that have been quite successful, and we feel that this would be as well. We do have mass transit readily available, you know, Rosa Parks Boulevard, uh, so we do think that the parking that we're providing in this location is sufficient, uh, and that we hope the Board will agree. Obviously available for any additional questions in the air.
I just wanted to follow up, Madam Chair, if I could briefly, um, John, Michael had mentioned about access to the garage area, and you wanted us to clarify that?
Yes. On our drawing, uh, SP two, we have our site plan drawing. The, the main access is gonna be a curb cut, little curb cut apron, uh, right off of Governor Street, uh, and that would actually allow both ingress and, and entry onto our site.
And in terms of the ingress and egress, do you think that, that driveway cut apron is more than sufficient to handle that parking traffic?
Absolutely.
Okay. And, uh, you also indicated the lighting would be off the standard LED standard type lighting, I believe?
Yeah, I think we are proposing to have all LED, you know, energy-efficient lighting, uh, throughout the, um, throughout the building. There'll also be shining light onto the sidewalk areas as well, uh, and, um, uh, the other lights would actually be installed in the parking garage shining down, so it'll be very, very well lit. Uh, the entrance lobby will be equally as well lit, uh, there will be a security system to get into the building, uh, you know, some type of key fob system that will be employed, and the main entrance, uh, into the building is right off of Governor Street here, the parking garage.
And I know the applicant will confirm it, but I also indicated in my opening, there will be no liquor stores on this site, and the retail uses that the redevelopment plan, uh, sort of envisions in terms of these neighborhoods are typical small service-type businesses that serve the walk-up community, I would assume?
Well, that, that's exactly correct, and, and that's really what has survived in these locations, uh, and that's what we propose, you know, and, and we wanna see, is the neighborhood accessory use, you know, for the area, that, that would be ancillary to the residential development. Uh, and, um, again, you know, it could be, it's definitely gonna be a neighborhood-type business, uh, residential, uh, commercial.
That's all we have, Madam Chair, at this time, subject to course. Any questions?
Okay, so at this time, I'll open up to the public. If there's anyone in the public that has any questions of Mr. Bleeker, the architect, based solely on his testimony, questions based solely on his testimony for now, okay? Please call in at one-nine-seven-three-three-two-one-one-five-seven-nine, nine-seven-three-three-two-one-one-five-seven-nine, and the meeting ID number is seven-one-one-dash-six-eight-zero-dash-zero-zero-seven-one. I'll allow two minutes for call-ins and three minutes for questions. Thank you. Yes?
I'm sorry, uh, we are in the center of the portion, or we are, Commissioner questioning?
No, you're not, well, I'm not ready for you yet, I'm ready for the public to call in first, if there's no question. I'll open it up to the Commissioners.
No problem. Thank you.
We have no calls at this time, Madam Chair.
Okay, so at this time, I'll open it up to the Commissioners of the Board. Remember, the questions are solely for the architect, based solely on his testimony this evening. Okay, so Commissioners, any questions from Mr. Bleeker?
I have questions.
Yes, Commissioner Brooks, please.
Uh, Madam Chair?
Okay, one-on-one, Commissioner, wait, I'm calling on you one by one. Commissioner Brooks, call- Commissioner Brooks called, uh, Commissioner first, Commissioner Brooks, please.
Mr. Bleecker, I'd like for you to explain, um, the point five in Michael's, um, review. And it, it says that vehicular access into the building is proposed from Governor Street from a 22-foot drop curb and, and apron. Explain what that means to me. Does that mean that the, the cars are gonna enter and go down to the parking space?
Commissioner, yeah, I'd be glad to answer that question. Uh, basically, the, the only thing that that means is, as you know, you know, a curb is usually six inches high.
Right.
If you have a driveway entrance, you have to stop that curb to be flush with the existing roadway pavement. So that's all the terminology means, is the curving is gonna be dropped at 22 feet to allow the ti- you know, the tires to roll freely from the same level of pavement to the same level where the curb was made. And then the left apron is slant slope, you know, at the sidewalk level and go into the building area underneath. So the drop curb is just simply that that area has to be dropped empty six inches high as normal.
Not standard construction design?
That's correct.
Okay, so that's from the, that's from the actual street, you're saying?
That, that's the street level, that's correct.
At the street level? Okay, my second question is on the, um, the security. I see you said in, in, hold on, I see in Michael's, um, review, he says that, um, you're gonna have security cameras i- in the garage area. Um, but are there gonna be security, um, cameras on the exterior of the building? Because that section, I would think that we need lots of lighting and lots of, uh, lots of lighting and lots of, um, cameras.
Yeah.
Absolutely, Commissioner. I've mentioned this, you know, our whole intent here is to make this a safer, you know, area. And, and, you know, we're putting significant investment in this project. And we, of course, want, you know, to have the help from everyone, including, you know, eyes in the street as, as around our building at all our entrances as well as the parking garage and even the interior and at least the budget areas in the downtowns.
I understand that.
We definitely want our cameras that, that hurt those streets as well.
Oh, is, is that, I mean, is that part of your plan? I mean, you don't have light, I don't see lighting, um, in as one of the, is, is your plan other than? I don't see out, uh, exterior lighting other than the, um, you have security cameras around the garage, in the garages, I guess, but, um, your, your plans, your plans are really not showing it, right? I said, your plans are really not showing where the lighting is gonna, the lighting or, uh, the security for the lighting is gonna be, is, has, I mean, I mean, I'm seeing.
Really, the lighting is gonna be shown, uh, you know, I'm gonna be doing, obviously, the construction drawings.
Okay.
You know, because in this case, we don't have any open parking areas. So everything is gonna be underneath the existing building. So therefore the lights were not gonna be pole mounted lights. They're just gonna be building mounted lights, you know, and that's what's, they're gonna be on the other side of the first floor plan, shopping on the parking level below. So, uh, and I, as you know, in your ordinance, we can't shine lights off our property.
I understand that, yeah.
We are gonna light the sidewalk around our property, and that's it.
So Commissioner Brooks, if, uh, we're deemed this application working for approval, these complaints and the, and the subsequent submissions to the building of parking will absolutely reflect your concerns in your regard.
Okay, all right. I, uh, I just, um, that really concerns me, especially about the security and, well, the lighting also. Okay?
I'd like to say one thing here, uh, number 11 in the plan I see here, it says adequate site lighting should be installed and details of exterior lighting fixtures shall be provided. So I know you can't shine lights, but I mean, the point is that we need outside lighting on this. I'm just reiterating because of the, uh, the area for sure. Okay, and Commissioner Brooks, do you have any other questions? Commissioner Brooks? No, that's it. That's it. Okay, okay. Uh, I heard, I heard Commissioner Velez next, Commissioner Velez?
Uh, yes, uh, uh, Madam Chair, uh, Mr. Bleecker, uh, if you could do me a favor, can you, uh, uh, show me the last picture that you had there that shows the complete project? Uh, my thing I saw, if I'm trying to.
Yes, fine.
Oh, and, and, oh, yeah, correct. Um, and, and that's the, the final report, or final picture on it. Uh, this lot that, uh, that we're talking about, that's a corner lot, right? Correct?
That's correct.
That's the one that has a two brick building in the next to it?
Yes, the brick, yeah, the brick building is the same size as what was proposed, yes.
Correct. Uh, Mr. Bleecker, uh, can you tell me if you know what was there before? If it was similar building, uh, the one that's next to it?
Uh, Councilman, I, I really don't recall, uh, you know, what it was. I mean, obviously when we did our initial survey, you know, it was just a, a parking area with a cat on a concrete, that's it.
All right.
I don't know what was there before.
Uh, uh, thirty years ago, probably I could recall what was there before. And I, I mentioned a building next to it because I know that, that was a multi, uh, uh, quarter of buildings like that type, uh, the one that you have brick side next to it. Um.
Do you have a question?
Yes, I, yes, I have, I, I have a question, yes. Um, now, now with that, you threw, you threw me out my question. I was going with the line of question. Um, the, the, you stated that we, is the building's gonna be monitored with cameras, correct?
That's correct.
And also has, uh, parking inside?
Underneath the building, yes, correct.
Underneath. Uh, the, uh, the has a, a for recycling and garbage pickup section?
We, we have an area which we, we can provide there, but it's all gonna be done by private contract. So, uh, we're gonna do that all by private contract.
Correct. Is any chance, uh, Madam Chair, uh, for the future? I just had the agenda and the proposal paper, what, what they really, uh, that the planet, that the planner, uh, uh, put on, on, on front of us. But is any chance in the future, can this PowerPoint like this one could be attached to the?
It is, you should have received it in your email.
Um, no, I don't want, I don't, I don't.
All right, probably because maybe this tonight was just a, you know, reorganization, maybe you didn't get it in time. But yes, it's always attached, it's always attached.
All right. Uh, uh, and, uh, and last but not least, uh, uh, I just wanna, uh, say that, um, how many parking that, uh, the, um, we could speak on that, right?
You have to ask him any questions pertaining to his testimony only, okay? You gotta ask questions, this is for questions, not comments, just a question. On a yes.
Regarding the parking?
Whatever he testified to, yes.
Correct. Uh, uh, how many parkings was, uh, required in this? I see here is, um, uh.
Eighteen parking spaces were required, and he's providing eight.
Eight, all right. And that will, I will raise that question on that. I just wanna go based on the, uh, history of the area. Thank you.
All right, um, I did hear Commissioner Sivalios earlier. Do you still have a question, Commissioner?
Yes, I still have a question, it's about, uh, African part of the lot, why the customer list is gonna say, uh, best. And number 14, number 14, the African had not buy how trash and recycling would be a store and handle. Uh, are we going to have a super in the building or how are we going to, if we're going to have a containers, a, a COV yards, a COV yards to collect the garbage, for collection, how that will work?
Mr. Spalas, if I may, uh, we'll have the OPCA confirm that, but Mr. Bleecker can give you a concept of where within the confines of this site plan the trash and the, and the recycling could be, uh, provided for. Of course, as you know, they have to be separated or segregated from each other. So, uh, we have a concept that we think we can incorporate into a final plan if the board does approve this application. Uh, and we'll confirm how, whether a super will handle it, but it will be a private pickup as Mr. Bleecker indicated. So I'll leave it to Mr. Bleecker to give you the best, uh, option on that.
Uh, Commissioner, that's my argument. Um, with, with regards to your question, we, we do have area, uh, which we just highlighted, I don't know if you can see it, but we just highlighted it in blue, uh, on, on the, uh, on the screen right now, which is really the proposed first floor plan. It's an area behind the parking stall. And that would be, you know, that would be a typical, um, in probably like a three to four yard, uh, rolling dumpster location, uh, for trash. And that would be, uh, actually accessible to be, you know, rolled out and taken by private, uh, private carrier, uh, multiple times during the week. Uh, usually it's at least two times during the week, it might be three. Uh, and then, um, the building, you know, uh, management is obviously gonna take care of the recycling items as well. And there's enough room in that area and in front of that area, uh, to store recyclables as well. Uh, we will, if the board likes, you know, we can fence that area in with a PVC type fence, uh, with a gate, so it, it wouldn't be viewable, you know, from anybody that's, uh, you know, using the parking area. Uh, so that's, that's what the board would like to see. We have no objection to doing anything like that. Uh, but that, again, is gonna, we feel that this will be all done by private contractors and it will be handled by building management in terms of recyclable as well as, you know, what. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Madam Chair, may?
Yes, yes, Mr. Bleecker.
I, I wanna go back to, um, uh, Commissioner Brooks's comments for a second. Commissioner Brooks, are you there?
Yes, I hear, yes.
Okay. Uh, okay, um, I, I'm not quite sure that you were satisfied with the questions regarding the security, the, um, lighting and security lighting. Um, I just wanted to kinda flush that out a little bit. Were you satisfied with what was represented as to the lighting that is being proposed, um, in the exterior of the building?
Well, I was used to it being on the plans on, but since he's saying that, you know, on the construction plans that it's gonna be there, I, I guess I can accept that. But normally, um, usually, um, it's on the architects, the site, it's also on the site plans where the lighting and the security is gonna be. But I accept that he's saying to me that that's gonna be, cause what can I say, you know?
Okay, thank you.
Probably it's on the, on the site plan.
Okay, Mr. Bleecker, if, if, if you can, can you just kind of explain how this, uh, uh, I'm gonna call it perimeter lighting or exterior lighting is actually going to, um, I'm not gonna say installed, but, but what is actually to, as best as you could explain it being proposed for exterior lighting and security lighting around the building?
Uh, it's fair to be that, what I, what I envision, uh, you know, obviously I gotta be careful of your ordinance, because your ordinance doesn't allow us to go beyond our shop limits, you know, in terms of, uh, the percentage of light. But what I envision is that on both Carroll and Governor Street, lightings that are mounted off of the building, on the vertical wall of building. And I would envision that it would actually be more architectural kind of lighting that would shine up the building, the highly, you know, the architectural penetration that we're gonna have to make the building more, more, um, noticeable as well as, you know, it'll enhance the look even at night. But also a, a small percentage of that light would also be directed downwards, directed downward onto the sidewalk level. So we can actually have the sidewalk, you know, completely illuminated all the way along, on at least a large set of our property from Carroll Street to the long Governor Street. So they are basically the, uh, like they shine vertical and then downward. Um, you know, but it would be more of an architectural aesthetic lighting in, in like a pole mounted, uh, light that you see in the middle of a parking lot that shines at 22 feet.
This is decorative, decorative lighting?
Very, it would be decorative lighting, that's correct.
Okay.
Okay, so would it be fair to say, and I'm gonna be general about this, would it be fair to say that, um, the proposal, um, encompasses lighting around the perimeter of the building and on the building, which would more particularly be, um, approved when the specific plan is submitted to the construction official? Would that be a fair assessment?
That's exactly what they're stating, yes. I mean, significant, very significant lights installed in the ceiling of the garage shining on the road, so we're gonna probably go make the garage a week.
Okay, thank you. And then the other thing I wanted to point out is, Mr. Deutsch, um, Councilman Velez had, um, had some questions and, uh, concerns regarding trash and recycling. Um, I know Mr. Bleecker took time to explain that. Is there any specific ordinance that, um, we should be making reference to that, um, basically affects the trash and recycling process on a building like this?
Well, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Well, I'm, I'm sure that they're gonna, you know, put it on, but the trash will be put on the curb, but I don't understand where, where tenants are going to place their, their trash and where it's gonna be placed in the building before it gets to the sidewalk area for pickup?
Yeah, and that, that was, that was where I was going with this, because unless I missed something, I didn't hear that. And I didn't, um, I, I don't know if we need to hear a little bit more about that or, that's what I had asked you, if, if there's a specific ordinance that maybe I'm missing that would actually govern how that takes place. I don't think there is, is there?
No, there's no, there's no specific, um, ordinance that says where in a building trash is going to be, or, or, I mean, I, I, it could be an outside dumpster, but I don't see room for it on this site.
Okay, so Mr. Bleecker, can you, um, kinda expand on that a little bit? Because I think, or electively, there are a couple of commissioners and even our planner who's not a hundred percent clear on, on how that's going to be placed. Okay, we will address that.
All right, um, Mr. Eckelbeater, I mean, if you look back again at our drawing, the, the area in blue is an area that we're, we're proposing, um, we're fencing and enclosed. And that's the area where we're gonna actually have a rolling dumpster that's gonna be taken care of by private contractors.
Right.
Uh, and that's gonna be, could be located within, that's a six foot six, uh, wide area. And that area is, is double, you know, a parking stall, so that's, that's giving us 18 feet. That's an extremely large area that we can, we can use to, within recyclable, uh, containers as well as to general, uh, rolling, um, you know, collection dumpster for general garbage. And that could be maneuvered, uh, to, you know, growing collection time. And that's what we typically do in situations, but they will get multi-handed.
And you were gonna fence it, you were gonna fence it in also, correction?
We'd fence that in, absolutely. And we have one each, that, that would be available in that location.
Okay, that is street level, right?
That is street level, that's absolutely correct.
Okay.
Yeah, so you're, out of the elevator, you go down the elevator, if you can look, uh, then you can go, there's a man door that has an area beyond where the parking is and between the parking and the commercial unit, that's a sidewalk. And you can walk there and unload your, your garbage or recyclables and get into your apartment, leave the site and vice versa.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, that, I think that, that explains it, thank you.
Okay, all right. Are there any of the commissioners with questions for Mr. Bleecker? Commissioner Cleese, yes, Commissioner Cleese?
Um, e- e- excuse my novice question, cause this is my first meeting, so I'm trying to really follow and understand what's going on. But my, my first question, um, has to do with parking. Um, there's 18 spaces required. Um, you're only, and this is to Mr. Bleecker, um, um, through the chair. There's 18 spaces required, you're only providing eight spaces, but you're building, um, a building with three stories of four apartments each, which is 12 apartments. So you're not even providing at least one parking space per, per unit. So how do you, um, how do you plan to accommodate the, 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 the tenants, the residents for parking?
Commissioner, that's a very good question, and I appreciate that. But, I mean, we, we've been involved in a lot of projects in this, in role within the fourth ward. And again, when we have mass transit located within a block away or less than a block away, and we have, um, a location such as this, uh, we, we found that even a one-to-one parking, uh, space, it doesn't get fully utilized. So, uh, you know, we do feel that this ratio of eight, you know, parking spaces for this building, because a lot of our individuals that, that occupy the buildings in these areas that, that occupy the buildings in these areas do still use mass transit and, uh, and we recognize that. And, uh, we can feel that, uh, this building is the right size and shape, you know, basically we wanna maintain the streetscape along Carroll Street, we wanna maintain the streetscape, uh, along Governor Street, you know, so obviously that gives us the location where the building wants to be. And as Commissioner, actually Councilman Villas indicated, the building right next to us is numerous stories, uh, so it's something that actually went directly into it and, and we, you know, when they were making books, like it sits and like it was meant to be there in terms of the massing of the building. So that obviously knows how, you know, the four units are four, but, uh, we did recognize that we need outdoor recreation, which we provided up at this level. And we do believe the parking is sufficient based upon our sharing.
Mr. Bleecker, if I may, just also add, obviously you're familiar with many of the parking studies, you're not a parking transportation expert, but again, as you alluded to just now in your testimony, many of these cases have concurred that this type of unit within the redevelopment zone, generally this ratio seems to work. And in fact, some of the developers, is it not true, have found that they have more than enough parking in, in this type of situation?
That is correct. You know, for urban locations, you know, something that's located within a city such as this, uh, where there is fair amount of density, uh, that's definitely true. You know, with the parking, uh, it could actually be reduced significantly. If this was located in a different city or rural, uh, then obviously we'd have that issue.
Um, I'm, I'm not satisfied with that, because I think, um, when you're talking about building, uh, a new edifice, um, um, you tend to, um, get a different, um, type of person now that may want to live in a new edifice. But if the parking is not, um, the parking is not available or conducive to what the, the person needs, then they, they won't, you know, gravitate to, um, to that area. So I think, I think, um, the, you know, I'm not an expert in it at, at, at all. I'm just a, you know, a community person, um, but I think that the parking is not, um, to me is not sufficient. Um, I, I, I have another question too, and I don't know, I was trying to, um, trying to follow, I, I got the information, um, late, so I wasn't able to, um, vet through it, so I was just trying to do it by listening. You, you gave, um, uh, in, in the reading, there were required footage, um, like a three foot, um, but we were only getting zero footage, five foot, we were getting zero footage, 20 foot, but we were getting zero footage. Could you explain what that is, um, to me?
Yes, Commissioner. What that is, is where the existing property line is, um, the ordinance asked for, in one case, as you just mentioned, a three foot setback. And then the application asked for a five foot setback.
Okay.
You know, either the front property line to where we can start the building construction, or it's from the side property line to where we can start the building construction.
Okay.
There is also provisions within your ordinance in many locations that even though you have those minimum setbacks, they're also, and I think this is a very good provision in your ordinance, is that you're allowed to, you know, have existing development that's right next to you impacting your site, you aren't allowed to make adjustments to those setbacks, you go more contextual and coming more in line with them. And that's exactly what we're proposing here, is we think it's much nicer to be in line with the building next door and have a solid streetscape than having one building at the street which the neighbor property is, and then our building all of a sudden steps back, which will look actually funnier to me. You know, so it's very vibrant, asking your board, and I'm glad you brought it up. Uh, but I do believe it is an important thing, it's an aesthetic consideration that I think would make it look a lot nicer to this project, if we can keep that, maintain that streetscape on both Carroll and Governor, especially on the corner, especially on the corner location. And if you look at some new developments around the area, you'll see that that's what they have done on the corner locations, and it does look really, really nice. It's a very nice aesthetic, uh, solution for the form.
And if I may as well, uh, do any of these setbacks, in your opinion, create any sort of impact in terms of lighting area for surrounding properties?
No, no, they do not.
Okay, okay. Commissioner Cleese, any other questions? Thank you, thank you. All right. Any other commissioners, any questions? Okay, hearing none. Okay, hearing none. Mr. Aquilby, Mr. Aquilby?
Before, before you go, um, Ms. Madam Chair, I just want to clarify a statement, uh, that made by, uh, by, uh, our attorney, uh, Alvedis. In the past, uh, you could correct me if I'm wrong, in the past, there was a conditional approval regarding the recycling and the collection of garbage. It was a conditional approval, means that, uh, to not put a burden into the city, uh, in the collection or whatever, it was into the responsibility of the owner of the building to collect, um, their own garbage and recycling, to not put a burden to the city. That's why I mentioned the recycling and collection.
All right, then you accept that. That's our testimony, that's a private collection pickup, and that we have no problem, of course, with that being a condition, as well as the, uh, additional supplement to the plan, the garbage and recycling area.
For, for, Maricona, that, that, the reason I'm saying is because we just put it in, in a verbal, but I don't see it on paper. And when everything is constructed, and I already had the experience out here, uh, when they finish a construction, and according to them it's conditional approval that they have to have a private collector for garbage and recycling, um, somehow it gets lost in the paper, because nobody, nobody put it in the paper.
Now, we absolutely agree that Mr. Aquilby will be diligent in adding that condition to the resolution, and the final plans that Mr. Bleecker will submit will reflect that as well.
Thank you. Madam, Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes.
Councilman, um, it's a very, very good concern, uh, the point I wanted to make, and that's why I was asking these questions before, um, as a matter of procedure, when a, um, commissioner, if a commissioner were so inclined to, um, put a motion on the table to approve this application.
Right.
Um, those conditions would have to be set forth in the motion. I will summarize what conditions I've heard, what issues I've heard, but it's up to the commissioner who makes the motion to actually incorporate those conditions into the approval, into the motion. If there is such an approval, they will then be written in the resolution that I will draft.
Okay. All right, thank you. Okay. Um, Mr. Maricona? Please, please call your next witness.
We will call, uh, Mr. Aaron Melman, who's our applicant. Aaron, are you with us?
Yes, I am.
Okay, you're, no, you're gonna be sworn in.
Please raise your right hand. You swear or affirm the testimony about to give us the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I affirm.
Okay. You say your full name?
I'm sorry. Aaron D. Melman.
All right, Mr. Melman, you are the principal of 5153 Carroll Street, LLC, is that correct?
Yes, I am.
And, uh, you have heard all the testimony this evening, as well as Mr. Deutsch's report and the commissioners' comments and recommendations?
Yes, I heard everything.
Okay. And are you in full agreement with not only our presentation, but based on the dialogue from the commissioners, uh, the conditions that would be attached to a potential motion for approval?
Yes, I agree to all that was stated, yes.
Okay, very well. Just one, uh, step looking back, is this your first development in Patterson?
Well, I've owned other properties for the last 20 years in Patterson.
Right, and this is your first new construction development?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, and you are experienced in managing multifamily real estate?
Yes, that's my specialty.
Right, and with respect to that, you will have no problem meeting the conditions regarding steering, lighting, garbage and recycling as well?
That's correct, I welcome it.
Good, good. And obviously you're familiar with the area. Will you, will you have a super or will this be strictly all residential rentals of, and your, your own main staff will service the property? Which way do you do it?
Well, I haven't decided yet with this particular property. Uh, my, the current thinking is to have professional management, uh, come in daily, you know, cleaning staffs, et cetera, instead of having one, having a team. I think that's what this particular project requires. But, um, I'm open to different ideas, but I'm thinking we would need multiple individuals really tackle this particular project. I want it to work, I want it to be safe, I want it to be, this is a beautiful building worth $2 million that I'm personally investing, uh, with, uh, warranty services, uh, in every single apartment, that's an extra. And I want it to be beautiful with a beautiful terrace and, uh, outdoor area seating, et cetera, on the roof of the building. So I, I want it to work. So whatever, whatever will make the building more safe, more beautiful for the tenants and, and the neighborhood, that's, that's where I will go, either professional management team or I can have a supervisor.
All right, challenging a good concept to, to manage this type of property as well. All right, uh, that's all I have of Mr. Melman at this time. Subject to any questions?
Okay, um, I'm going to, uh, let me, let me open it up to the commissioners. Commissioners, any questions?
Yes, I do.
Yes, Commissioner Villas?
Uh, there's a quick one. Uh, thank you, uh, um, what's his name again? I forgot.
Mr. Melman.
Aaron.
Aaron, that's easy, Aaron. Um, I remember the furnace is for, Aaron. Um, Aaron, I see that you have, you could have a commercial component on it, right?
I'm sorry, a, a commercial components? Yes.
Correct. Uh, what kind of commercial, uh, you, you have already tied up there? Your mom?
Oh, nothing. I, I, I welcome any suggestions.
Oh, I can suggest something. Can I suggest something?
Please, by all means, Councilman.
No, no, we can store it, please.
No, they're not gonna do that.
They're just gonna do that.
All right, uh, that will, that will, yeah, thank you.
Any other commissioners?
Yes, I have questions. Yes, Commissioner Brooks. Uh, I'd like to know, since this is, uh, this is in one of those areas and I'm, I'm really glad that this building is being built and I think it's wonderful, I think people, maybe it'll change the, the complex of the neighborhood. What, what I want to know is how are the tenants gonna be secure in terms of going into this building? Are they gonna have, uh, a lock on, uh, a key, um, to the garage, or how do they get into, how, what are you gonna do as far as a, a lock is concerned so that no one other than a tenant can go into that building?
Absolutely an important concern, Commissioner. I think Mr. Bleecker touched on it, but Mr. Melman or Mr. Bleecker could follow up on it again, either way.
I, I didn't hear any, I, my question was to the owner, because I thought he would be the one that would be putting special locks or, or some, like, for example, is the, the garages are gonna have, um, you know, the, the, the keys, the, the automatic keys or whatever, or phones.
I, right, I'll, I'll jump in there, thank you very much. The, uh, what I'm thinking, I want to use the latest technology. In fact, if one tenant leaves and the other one, I want keys to the, uh, from my experience, uh, passed from one to the other or copied. It, it must be, we have to, you know, apply the latest technology, like you said, a man with the bombs, uh, which could be easily terminated by, you know, the, uh, master company or the management company. Uh, that's the only way to access, uh, the apartments, the exterior building and also parking. We'll have very tight security. I, I'd like to do away with the physical locks, uh, maybe even on apps on your phone to just leave it with a button and they get access to the property. But rest assured that we can have the extremely tight security in the, in the, in the building and in the surrounding area too.
Well, good, good, because my one concern was, it's so nice to have a rooftop for the tenants and I don't like, I don't want to see, um, people who don't belong in that building, up on that rooftop doing anything.
Right, I agree. That, that would be a disaster. I, I, I realize, yeah.
Okay, that's my question. Thank you.
Okay, commissioners, any other questions? Commissioners, any other questions? Okay, hearing none, I'm gonna open this up to the public for comments. I'll give, I'll give everybody who wants to call in, from the public to members to call in, three minutes for their comments. And the actual phone number is, sorry, just give me one minute here, 973-321-1579. And the meeting ID is 711-680-0071. Again, the number, 973-321-1579. And the meeting ID, 711-680-0071. Two minutes for a call in, three minutes for your comments. Thank you.
We have no callers at this time, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, Mr. Maricona, is that?
Yes, ma'am, yes, thank you. Uh, that would conclude our testimony, Madam Chair. I will be brief in terms of summation. I think the option and the, uh, expert architect and planner are fully satisfied of questions and, uh, response to Mr. Bleecker's report as well as the commissioners. I think it's an exciting, very challenging opportunity for the applicant as well as this community. Uh, this is a good opportunity and a very springboard to other development, but it gives us the clear goals of the redevelopment plan, the sort of place here in terms of new housing and small block up commercial businesses that are two neighborhood businesses, not hangouts, not liquor stores, nothing of that nature whatsoever. So, that being said, we ask the board's consideration. We accept and agree to all conditions that have been discussed, that have been talked about on several, uh, points in this testimony. So, without, we ask the board's consideration for a motion for approval. Thank you.
Thank you. I think that, uh, what I heard this evening was that, uh, a fence would be put around, uh, the recyclables. And I believe there would be some decorative and outside lighting and, uh, security cameras.
Yes.
And I believe that we're going to have something more updated than a key for, to get into the entrance. Um, Mr. Aquilby, did I miss anything?
There would be a prohibition that would run with the land, um, of no liquor stores occupying the commercial space.
That's right, that was mentioned also. Okay.
Also, also the, uh, collection of recycling and garbage, such as.
Oh, no, that, that goes without saying, they're gonna have that, private industry, they, they put that on record. Thank you. Okay, so, um, I would like now to ask, uh, if, if any commissioner would like to make a motion on this application?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Zavala.
Yeah, I would like to make a motion, uh, the application, uh, for 5153 Carroll Street, LLC, 270 West, 84th Street, New York, New York, 10024, property located on 5153 Carroll Street, blocks 3211, blocks 44 and 45, a, um, can't go to the press solution approving the high ground approvals, board finances, CD Engineering, HEB Soy Conservation District, and all the noted, uh, additional, uh, concerns that Commissioner and Councilman Villas put on the table. So move second.
What, who moved it? Commissioner Fisher?
Yeah.
Commissioner Fisher? Okay.
Second, uh, Savalas.
Yes, then, yes.
No.
No.
No, no.
No.
Hello, it can't be that way. No, I know. Hello, hello, wait, just give me one moment and I will say what it is, okay? Harry Zavala's made the motion, Commissioner Fisher seconded it. Okay, so now I'm gonna move forward and ask for, um, uh, the roll call, please.
Thank you. Commissioners, Commissioner Ahmed?
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Savalas?
Yes.
Commissioner Cleese?
I'm saying.
Commissioner Fisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Eugene? Here we go, Commissioner Eugene? Commissioner Witherspoon? Also Commissioner Santana?
Yes.
Commissioner Eugene?
Yes.
Commissioner Witherspoon? I don't hear him, so I, I assume he is left. Councilman Villas?
Let the record reflect that, uh, when we're doing a webinar meeting, is that we are stepping in anybody's shoes on board. in anybody's shoes on voice, is that is a delay in the system. I want to step in, Mr. Fisher, motion. My vote is yes.
Thank you. One more time, Commissioner Witherspoon? Okay, and Chairwoman Northrop? Thank you.
Madam Secretary, for the record, what is the vote?
A affirmative. One abstaining. One left in the meeting.
Thank you very much.
Okay, congratulations. Okay, on to the next application. Okay, everybody, please turn off your mics. So there's no background noise, thank you? Okay, so the next application is for Pillar College sixty Park Place, well, I'm sorry, Pillar College, one eleven Washington Street, lot four four zero seven, lot twenty-one.
Excuse me, Chairwoman, Mr. Maracanda, can you have your, Mr. Bleeker remove his plans, Mr. Maracanda?
Have Mr. Bleeker remove his plans. Okay, he can't hear either now.
We are on, we are on, we're working on it right now.
Okay. So then, that being said, I'm gonna continue. A pillar code. Applicant proposes to occupy the second floor of a renovated three-story office building. The second floor contains seven thousand two hundred and nine square feet. The second floor will contain classroom space, office space, conference space, restrooms, a stairwell and an elevator. The applicant offers classes and higher education opportunities and the parcel has a total of ten thousand three hundred and forty-three square feet. A parking variance is requested. This proposal is located within the B four downtown central business district. Require site plan approval and both variances. Okay, Mr. Maracanda, are you representing?
I am representing Pillar College, yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. Deutsch, will you give us your review, please?
Yes.
Okay, the plans are still up there, Mr. Maracanda?
Mr. Bleeker is trying, there's some sort of.
Okay, all right, all right, let's hear the review from Mr.
Hopefully get it off before the review is complete.
Okay, all right. Mr. Deutsch?
Property taxes and sewer charges are paid to date.
Did we lose Mr. Deutsch? Okay, we lost Mr. Deutsch.
Uh-uh, can you hear me now?
Now I can hear you, yes, please continue.
All right. According to public information, Pillar College was formerly known as Somerset Christian College and is a private evangelical Christian college with its main building in Newark, New Jersey and may be the only accredited evangelical college in the state of New Jersey. G P engineering LLC has prepared a survey dated July eighth, twenty sixteen. The survey indicates that the parcel's front of eighty-three point six-six feet on Washington Street, a northern side lot line that measures one hundred twenty-three point eighteen feet, a southern side lot line that measures one hundred twenty-four point nine-six feet, and a rear lot line that measures eighty-three point six-six feet. The parcel's area of ten thousand three hundred and forty-three square feet or zero point two-three-seven acres. The survey also indicates that a three-story masonry building exists on the parcel. The building previously served as the police headquarters for the city of Patterson until an interior fire forced the relocation of the police force in nineteen eighty. On November second, twenty sixteen, the planning board heard and approved an application on this parcel to reconstruct the interior of an existing three-story building and construct a partial two-story addition. The basement and all the floors above were proposed to be used for storage and office use. The parcel's total area of ten thousand three hundred and forty-three square feet. This proposal is located within the B four downtown central business district. Andrew Fethes Architects has prepared a three-page site plan dated February fifth, twenty twenty. G P zero one indicates the site plan, the zoning analysis, zoning notes and the zoning map. The property is on the west side of Washington Street between Ellison Street and Manhattan Street. The survey indicates the three-story masonry building, the outdoor courtyard with planters and benches, gated alleyways and the Washington Street building entrance. G P zero two is the basement, first, second and third floor existing floor plans. G P zero three indicates the proposed second floor plan. Existing suites five, six and seven are to be divided into spaces to accommodate classroom and office space. Existing common spaces, which include the restrooms, common hallways, the elevator and two stairwells, will remain unchanged. Suite five is to contain a computer lab, offices, workstations and a waiting area. Suite six is to contain six classrooms, an office and a lounge. Suite seven is to contain seven offices, a conference room, left space, a reception area, a pantry and storage space. As the applicant proposes three thousand seven hundred and fifty-two square feet of building space, and every two hundred square feet of building space to be occupied, one Wall Street parking space is required, a total of nineteen Wall Street parking spaces are required. As there is no Wall Street parking space is available on the parcel, a variance is required. The applicant shall obtain at least the Patterson parking authority for the nineteen required Wall Street parking spaces. It shall be the responsibility of the applicant and/or the preparer of the plan to obtain a letter from the city engineer indicating that the plans have been satisfactorily reviewed prior to the plans being released to the construction official. Any proposed use of this building other than offices will require a new application before either the City of Patterson Planning Board or the Zoning Board of Adjustment. Surrounding land uses. This proposal is located in the downtown section of the city. The reutilization of this building may prolong street activity in the central business district after the roof day has ended by providing jobs, patronizing nearby shops and restaurants. Additionally, this may spur reuse of nearby buildings for residential development. The applicant estimates, in conclusion, the applicant estimates the total cost of this proposal at approximately twenty-five thousand dollars. As your conclusion for the proposal, I have a chair for it.
Thank you. Somebody has their mic on, can we turn it off, please?
Mr. Bleeker?
We're on now.
If you go down to the icon with the little arrow, it says share, or on top it says share, you can just click on it and unshare it.
Meg, unfortunately, stuck giving me that option.
Do you see this, my arrow? Can you see my arrow? Or no?
No.
On the bottom, by the microphone, there's a camera, that third one?
Yep.
Clicking on that.
It opens up into a shared content? Either way, that you dropped, you can't remove it?
You're trying to work on it from here.
Yeah, we apologize. Yeah, we apologize. I dropped it in the shared file folder, I don't know if he can remove that from the shared file. I apologize.
Excuse me, Mr. Bleeker, you'll have to disconnect and reconnect to the meeting is the only way.
That's, that's what I had just done, I just removed myself and then reconnected, but this came back on.
Still there.
I can try it again if you'd like.
We're going to disconnect you from here, okay?
Madam Secretary, I know you guys are working on it, but is there any possibility that we can overlay this with the next project?
Good, so.
It's down now, okay, good. All right, so we'll continue.
Okay, Chairwoman Northrop, everything's ready to go.
Got it, okay, I see it. Okay, so, Mr. Deutsch, thank you for your review, so Mr. Maracanda? Mr. Maracanda?
He's calling back in, he's with Mr. Bleeker, remember?
Okay, okay, they want the same thing, okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Can I ask a question to Mr., until he comes up, to the term of the board?
Is it related to this application?
Correct.
We're back on and I think we're off the screen.
Okay, no, not right now.
Not to you.
Yeah, Commissioner Velas, just let me begin, okay? Because he's ready to go and I wanted to give his, give his testimony, okay? We're back to it, all right, yes. Okay, thank you, Mr. Maracanda, you may begin.
Yes, I really, really apologize for that. Again, we're presenting our application on behalf of Pillar College. Mr. Deutsch's report is accurate in every respect. This is an application that some of the commissioners made recall back in two thousand and sixteen, I'm sorry, two thousand and eighteen, excuse me, back in the lumber of that year. And everyone, I'm sure, knows this site, this is downtown on Washington Street, this is the old police station building with great character and history. And my client, who would be property owner, which is one eleven Washington Street Realty LLC, made an incredibly, bailed a complete effort to renovate and remodel and restore this building to modern, modern conditions and available for what we call flex office space that was approved that evening. And I know you've seen, many of the commissioners have seen the work that has been ongoing, it's ready to opt to, to be occupied, and we were able to locate for one particular portion of the building, as Mr. Deutsch indicated, the second floor space, for a school that would provide a classroom space, office space, conference room, as well as administrative offices, for a higher education type of program. And so because this is a particular use of the educational format, or educational nature, I should say, this particular use requires us to come back to your board and to obtain the approval for this particular modification of our site plan. We did talk about the fact, of course, at the time, that the parking authority was very admirable and agreed to parking leases for the premises, and since that time, in anticipation of this hearing, the applicant was able to confirm that the parking authority would provide the required nineteen parking spaces allocated for this portion of the building. That was corresponded to Mr. Deutsch back on April ninth by Mr. Brian Droft, who's with me this evening, who's a representative, the owner of the property, and that was on behalf of the applicant, of course, as well. So the object to this board making a determination, hopefully in our favor, that letter of intent and agreement will be memorialized in more detail, as many of the agreements are in downtown business district for this particular use. Of course, we have the ability to use public transportation, which is very, it's right around the corner essentially on all sides, so we envision that this school would be used by many Patterson residents and surrounding neighbors for this opportunity for higher education within this building. The other office space approval? Just asking the board to consider this limited modification of our prior approval. We call it, Mr. Andrew Fethes, who's the architect, on the site, with regards to testimony of this.
Okay, you're breaking up a little bit, please proceed.
Commissioner?
Yes, Commissioner Savalos.
I hear the council mention going over the application. My question is, Patterson Historic Preservation Commission, I don't see anything here in the narrative that relates to that. Number four, the due requires site plan approval, all variances, city engineer, Patterson Historic Preservation Commission. I don't see anything in the narrative addressed to any of that.
Well, I would say, I would defer to Mr. Deutsch. I know the historic commission was aware of, was very familiar with the great work that's gone on in this building, and I think, Mr. Deutsch, they gave the prior approvals to the office space design, is that correct?
That is correct. The Historic Preservation Commission is concerned with only the exterior facade of the building, they're not concerned with the interior of the building or what the use of the building will be. I would say I included that more, not only as a courtesy, but as a confirmation that it was previously reviewed by the Historic Preservation Commission.
Right, the interior of the building is, we think, an outstanding book and we do agree that that was approved by the historic commission.
So can I ask a question now?
No, no, actually, please, wait one second, please. Commissioner Savalos, okay, is that what you had there?
Yeah, trying to dialogue with the comment, please.
Okay, all right, so I'm gonna continue and have, you'll be a chance, Councilman Velas, just one moment, okay? So we're gonna have, Mr. Maracanda, you're gonna have your first witness, please. Please raise your right hand. You swore a current testimony, you're about to deliver the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
So your full name for the record?
Andrew Fethes, F E T H E S, six one three Oradel Avenue, Oradel, New Jersey. Thank you. Mr. Fethes, I know you had the opportunity to hear Mr. Deutsch's report in my opening comments. Also, I referred to the fact that you, or I may not have referred to the fact, but you in fact were the architect who worked with us on the original approval, is that right? That is correct.
And I saw your foot. Excuse me, stop, I didn't hear his credentials.
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize. Andrew, just give us your professional background again. Yes, I'm a registered architect in the state of New Jersey with thirty years' experience. I also have licenses in New York and Connecticut. I've appeared before this board as well with the original application for the conversion.
All right, thank you. We accept as an expert witness, thank you, please proceed.
I apologize, Madam Chair.
No worries.
Again, Mr. Fethes, so based upon the original design that was approved, would you tell us what this limited modification involves? So for the most part, if you'd like, I can try and share a plan with you. Yes. If you could. Make sure I don't give you a picture of my dog. Hopefully you're seeing some plans. Terrific. Okay, so the plans that I'm presenting here are the ones that Mr. Deutsch had identified already in his, in his presentation. The first.
Uh, the first sheet, P01, is a, a site plan, uh, very similar to the one we used for the prior application when the building was converted. And in essence, what it shows is that the entire second floor will be used by this applicant's Pillar College, um, occupying, um, the three, uh, suites, suite number five, six, and seven. Um, that we had, uh, was just by their background, uh, this, the original building plans that we presented, uh, was the subdivision of the building, uh, on, on all four floors, the basement and the three, uh, first, second, and third floor. Um, what was, you know, mostly in the basement, as Mr. Deutsch had indicated, is, uh, two lease spaces and storage.
Um.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, you're starting to break up a little bit here.
Perhaps if I talk a little bit slower and perhaps a little.
Yeah, I don't think it has anything to do with how fast you're talking, it's breaking up, I think there's something wrong. Uh, Madam Secretary, you there? All right. All right, I don't, I don't hear.
Yes, I can hear.
Okay, all right, um, can you see, i- i- if Brian or someone else knows what's going on? I hear, uh, Mr. Feathers, but I feel that his, he's breaking up when he's speaking. Mr. Feathers, you can try to continue, but if it, it gets really much worse, I'm gonna ask him to wait, okay?
I'd like, um, even Mr. Bleeker, can you shut your mic off, everyone, other than Mr. Feathers, as should help?
Okay, I'll, I'll, uh, continue. Um, the, uh, sheet P02 is a, is sort of a background sheet that shows all of the existing conditions on the property, and, and how the property, uh, building has been subdivided into multiple, um, lease spaces. Mr. Deutsch had indicated, uh, each of these are, uh, you know, available rental spaces. The second floor currently has, uh, suite five, six, and seven, which Pillar College will be occupying. Uh, the next page, uh, pa- page, uh, P03, uh, indicates, um, you know, uh, different spaces and the layouts for, uh, offices, uh, the computer lab, the conference room and office space, and then the east side of the building, uh, which is, uh, suite, uh, number six, is being used for classroom space and lounge space. That would be, in our opinion, the only space which is, you know, at balance with the original, um, application, which talked about, um, uh, office and administrative type space. Can everyone still hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so that, that classroom space is the, that, uh, suite number six has been broken up into basically, uh, six classrooms of varying sizes, um, for varying types of education, uh, instruction. There's a small space. Uh, we extended the, uh, public corridor, uh, into that, uh, uh, tenant space, again, suite number six, in order to provide two exits out for safety. There's also a small, uh, professor walkers for private consultation. I think that's all we have.
Andrew, I just wanted to, uh, point, if I could, and no, in, in no other respects, the rest of the building has not been modified in any way, is that right?
That's, that's correct. This is entirely a, what we would call an interior tenant fit out.
Right, and this, uh, this particular, before Central Business District permits educational uses, so of course there's no, uh, various, uh, sought for use, uh, so usually no other issues that the board needs to consider in terms of variance, is that right?
That is correct, yes.
That's all I have, Madam Chair, of this witness.
Okay, uh, I'll open it up this time to the public. If there's anyone from the public that has any questions of Mr. Feathers, the architect, okay, please call in at 973-321-1579, meeting ID 711-680-0071. Again, 973-321-1579, meeting ID 711-680-0071. I'll give you two minutes to call in and three minutes for your questions of this applicant. Thank you.
We have no calls at this time.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, any questions of Mr. Feathers? Commissioners?
Here, I don't have a question.
Commissioners Zayas.
Yeah, uh, Madam Chair, uh, to the applicant, uh, that nineteen spaces leased with the parking authority, is combination of both places, Manhattan and Washington Street, only one place? Or you want to propose to have like a grass, that song, uh, to alleviate any traffic conditions, or no?
I'm, I'm sorry, Commissioner, could you repeat that question again?
I, I can repeat it, okay, he's asking if there's gonna be any, um, uh, if you're gonna use both parking areas, okay, on Manhattan, and the other area from the parking authority, or is it just gonna be one area around the corner? And also, i- is this all gonna create any, uh, traffic, uh, problems around the area?
Right, uh, I believe our anticipation is that we can be using just the one bus truck to be through our building, uh, hopefully not a, not a variety of parking lot sites downtown. That's our understanding with Mr. Berhendt, which will be finalized. And we believe that because this is a very small scale school, and because of, as I indicated in my initial comments, the obvious clear availability of public transportation, and some students would even be able to, you know, take advantage of walking distance within the surrounding residential neighborhood, that the parking space is available to parking authority, providing worth enough to meet the needs of this small school. As we notice, as we can all note, I should say, the parking garages have done an excellent job of meeting the needs of the state town and the community college downtown, and there's been a great increase in the number of spaces available for downtown business, educational and, and, um, shopping purposes, if you will. So we're very confident about that utilization of spaces being sufficient.
Madam Chair, I'm satisfied with that.
Okay, I, I just have a quick question. Um, I, I see that, uh, nineteen spaces are required, and I'd like to know how, how it, nineteen spaces was arrived at, uh, like, how many teachers do you plan on having? How many students do you plan on having? Is that how the nineteen spaces were arrived at?
I would defer to Mr. Deutsch, but I, you know, also the owner of the, of the project, uh, not the, not the principal of the school, but the owner of the project is available to follow up as well.
I'll follow up with him later, then, Mr. Deutsch, do you know? Mr. Deutsch?
Yes, I'm here.
Yes.
Maybe I skipped over it, but I believe I mentioned in my review, for every two hundred square feet of building space to be occupied, and the applicant, on that, uh, on the second floor, and occupy three thousand seven hundred fifty-two square feet, one, one off-street parking space is required for every two hundred square feet, which is the approximate number of nineteen off-street parking spaces.
All right, that's my understanding as well, I just wanted to make sure Mr. Bleeker was on the same page.
Okay, I understand, I understand that. Yes.
Um, Mr. Maracanda, I do have the applicant on, on, on the, um, meeting as well, her name is Patricia Segedin, if you need to speak to her, or if you have a question.
I'm gonna do that, I'm gonna ask for her at the end, but for now, I'm just gonna ask if there's any other questions of Mr. Feathers, okay? So commissioners, any, any commissioner, any other questions? Okay, hearing none, Mr. Maracanda, will you call your next witness, please?
Yes, I'm gonna call Brian Droste, first, the owner of the property.
Okay.
Hello, how are you?
Hold on one. Raise your right hand. You swear or affirm testimony about to give us the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
State your full name for the record.
My full name is Brian Droste, that's D as in David, R-O-S-T.
Okay.
Okay, Brian, thank you for being with us tonight. Uh, obviously you've heard all the earlier testimony, as well as Mr. Bleeker's report, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and obviously, uh, most of the board members are very familiar with this site, aren't all of them? And, uh, they are aware of what's been done to this building. Give us an update on where you are on the building generally, and what you feel about this saying, who's already making good progress in terms of getting this site ready, hopefully in terms of market buying as soon as possible.
Definitely, you know, everybody I think knows that, you know, has seen this process of this project, knows how passionate I am about the building, and not only about the building, but the community that surrounds it. Um, you know, we have been working on this building for a couple of years, we've invested a lot of time, money, and efforts into restoring it, um, and now we're ready to really lease out a lot of the spaces. And, you know, this particular tenant is, I would say, is an ideal tenant, not just for us, but for the community as well. Um, you know, they are a small, you know, educate facility, but there's also a component where there's, you know, more office spaces for, you know, kind of an incubation space for, you know, um, nonprofits or startups, or tech companies, or, you know, whatever, you know, some college kids, you know, transition out of school, and they do have startups, and, you know, there's not much space for them. Yours is a grade A office building, um, within their school, so I, I think it's, I think it's a wonderful tenant, not just for a landlord's perspective, but also for the community.
Okay, we would agree, thank you. Uh, and then, uh, we do have a representative of Pillar with us, I believe, is that correct?
Yes.
Brian, that's your alchemist, okay. And Brian, uh, with respect to your agreement, uh, is, assuming the board is favorable on this application tonight, uh, you believe that the space would be ready pretty quickly now, is that right, for occupancy?
That's right, yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Other pretty questions?
Okay, any commissioners, do you have any questions of Mr. Droste? Commissioners? Okay, hearing none, okay, thank you, you may proceed.
Thank you, I'll, I'll call the representative of Pillar College at this time, I understand she's on the line.
Okay, thank you.
Please raise your right hand. You swear or affirm testimony about to give us the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I can't hear her.
Maggie, will the case be available?
Patricia Segedin, she is on the line. Patricia, can you hear me?
Uh, this is Patricia Segedin.
Here she is, thank you.
Hi, I, I'm calling in this evening, I, I.
Oh, wait a minute, did you say? Excuse me. I have to swear you in, man. I don't know if you heard me the first time. Did you hear me the first?
This is Patricia Segedin.
Oh, Jesus.
This is, this is Patricia Segedin, sir.
Segedin, please listen, you need to be sworn in first, that report reporter swear you in.
Thank you.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give us the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
State your full name for the record and spell your last name, please.
Patricia Segedin, S like in Sam, E, G like in George, E, D like in David, I, N like in Nancy, Segedin.
Thank you.
Thank you, Miss Segedin, could you tell us your, your position with the college that's the applicant's name?
Well, I'm actually involved with the, um, development and construction activities of this project.
Okay.
To the, uh, relationship with the, with the ownership and the contractor.
Okay, so.
Architect, volunteer.
All right, so, you're, are you familiar with the nature of the, uh, usage of the space?
Yes, I am.
If you can just let you know, that the search pool's, uh, opportunity to occupy this.
Yes, I've been in, I've been involved with this project and this tenant set out from its inception, and, um, in coordination with the ownership and the tenancy and the design team, the construction team, to facilitate the, uh, use and occupancy of the space.
Okay.
By Pillar College.
Okay, we anticipated in our application that there might be perhaps as many as ten to twelve staff members, uh, in any room time, is that, is that your understanding as well?
Yes, well, the occupancy has been designed by the architect, um, in, in accordance with the state codes for this particular type of use, uh, which have been reflected in the construction, uh, documents that have been presented to the city and the zoning application that has been provided to the city.
Okay, and is it correct that we have approximately six classrooms, a computer lab, as well as office space and allowance for the students?
Yes.
Okay, do you know the specific nature of what the emphasis of this educational entity is in terms of subject matter, if you do?
Um, my understanding is that this is for, um, educa-, uh, higher education for, um, particular, um, needs for the, for, uh, students that are looking to improve their skills.
And this would be primarily in the world, in the area of computer science, is that correct?
That's my understanding.
Yes, okay, and, uh, you're in agreement with Mr. Feathers' testimony about the layout of the building?
Yes.
Okay, and we also, uh, that this would be, uh, approximately an early morning to, of course, uh, early evening type of, uh, program on a Monday to Friday basis, is that right?
That's my understanding as well.
Okay, that's all I have, Madam Chair.
Okay, this time I'm gonna open it up to the public for any questions of Miss Segedin, okay? The phone number again is 973-321-1579. Meeting ID number is 711-680-0071. Again, 973-321-1579, meeting ID 711-680-0071. I'll allow two minutes for call in, three minutes for questions, thank you.
We have no calls at this time.
Thank you very much, commissioners, anyone, anyone have any questions for this?
I have a question.
Commissioner Brooks? Commissioner Brooks, go ahead. Commissioner Brooks?
Mrs. Se-, Mrs. Seledin, are you, um, are you affiliated with the college itself, or are you just a, um, coordinator of the, um, the, the project being built right now, or being coordinated? Are you just, or are you a part of Pillar Col-, College?
I, I am not, uh, part of Pillar College per se, but I am, I am very familiar with the college activities through the development of the tenancy, um, construction plan, uh, provided and, and recommended to the city.
Okay, so is Pillar College still a Christian, um, college, or is that still the basis for, of, of the, um, their, their, um, curriculum? Do you know, or you don't?
I don't, I don't know that, I'm sorry.
Okay, all right.
So, to the best of our knowledge of this question, maybe Brian has more information.
Maybe it's a question for you, I'll, I'll ask you the question, uh. Mr. Maracanda, I'll ask you the question, because maybe this is a question that she can address, and I have some questions about that, okay?
Right.
All right, thank you.
Are you gonna ask Mr. Maracanda, you can, you can ask him?
I'll ask Mr. Maracanda, because I, I just have, uh, I wanna know about the. I want to know about the students, where they're coming from and that kind of thing. And I don't think that she would, I don't think that you have that kind of knowledge, do you?
Is, is that for Mr. Joyce, maybe?
Perhaps, but Patricia, do you have a indication or knowledge of how the students are being recruited or brought into the school? Patricia?
I, I, I was thinking that I do not know exactly how they are brought into, so I would think that they would be applying for, uh, opportunities, um, to be able to better their education through this program that the, the Pillar College provides. They, they admit, they admit, they admit any, any, uh, any person that's interested in going in, in, in their program. There's no limitation.
Is there absolutely any religious limitations or any of that nature? I was frankly not aware that there was a former entity known as Somerset Christian in North Carolina, although that, maybe Brian may be aware of that. But I, to the best of my knowledge, this is a non-denominational program that this school is going to operate here now.
I think their basis...
If I could make a note on that, um, you know, historically, Pillar College had this religious component, but they did rebrand, uh, several years ago. And it's, you know, more about continuing studies as well as management programs. And it is open to everyone.
Right, okay.
That's what I thought.
Okay, then, then my other question is, is that in, in, in opening up the school here in that particular area, is it going to be open to this, 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 I mean, how will people in Patterson, um, or young people in Patterson know that this college is going to be there? What kind of, um, advertisement or enticements are they going to have or put about in Patterson so that Pattersonian youth can take advantage of this college?
Good question. I think Brian could answer that. I know that's the goal.
Yeah, for sure. I know, you know, they've been, they're going to be doing, you know, weekly kind of neighborhood invites to bring students into the school and to see the, you know, different classrooms and programs they offer. Uh, they're also having a lot of different programs with different funding, um, through different, you know, resources. And they're already, you know, have a presence somewhat in downtown Patterson, um, for many years. And they have a very large campus in Newark that they've been expanding. So they're, they're really a localized school. They want students to come in that are local and to, you know, the community. They're, but they were so excited to get to this building downtown, to have a presence, you know, closer to the street so people could see them. So that's, that's their, their main reason really to move in the building too. Plus, you know, everybody has seen the building. It's award-winning. It's the nicest building downtown. And I'm not just saying that because it's mine, but, you know, that, that's, you know.
Okay, all right. That answers my question because I was very concerned about, um, sometimes we get these things that come. I know a few of the colleges, this in Patterson, that many people don't even, many of our young people don't know about, uh, because they're satellite places. There's such and this one. And I just wanted to make sure that, you know, we, we, our kids are know, know about these, uh, places that's here for their benefit in the community. Okay, thank you.
Right, so to me, I think social media will be a big part of that, as well as what Brian indicates, like he's sort of not providing on several years now, that this building is obviously a source of great pride for him. And he's very, very motivated to promote the usage of this, use of this building. This is obviously, I think, a very primary use that's permitted use in the downtown business district.
Very good. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes, who is that?
Councilman Velez, if it's possible.
Yes, yes, Councilman Velez, go ahead.
Yes, uh, Madam Chair, thank you for the opportunity. I just want to, uh, highlight two things here. Um, Pillar College has been in, uh, in assistance for many, many years, uh, in Patterson also, in, uh, student, uh, college fairs in our high schools. So they are real diverse. Uh, they are individuals that, and I just want to say it because I'm in the community person, so I've seen them around. And not only that, a lot of individuals have been, uh, in, admitted to this school and they had to travel even to Newark and they were so happy because they gave the opportunity, not only in the, uh, craze, base, uh, education, but also in all the area education as well. Uh, I just want to say that.
Okay, thank you. You have a question?
Yes, I do have a question. Uh, you know, uh, I know that probably, uh, the, um, the lady that, the lady that was talking, she said that, um, she is aware of...
Ms. Sagedin, Ms. Sagedin.
Yeah, Ms. Sagedin. Yes, but, uh, this, this question is very important because it comes, um, with health. Uh, I know the pandemic have changed us all the way around and changed a lot of things. Uh, COVID-19 has changed our life in, in how we go to function and work. Uh, um, you know, um, if this building is going to, or the college is going to have, uh, um, following social distancing inside the building, uh, if it's ready to, uh, um, you know, circulation air or whatever when individuals are in there, are you guys already set up a plan? Uh, what is coming to, to tissue to open? Uh, what is capacity for each room? Uh, because we want to make sure that if, uh, if the building is already beautiful, I was there for the cotton ribbon, um, and, and it's have come beautiful to our area. But also, we want to make sure that, uh, the building meets the requirement of, uh, of COVID-19, uh, um, in place, you know?
Okay, so Ms. Sagedin, answer that question for the Councilman Velez.
Really? I got a question back because he's most familiar with this building.
Okay.
Yes, so, you know, on a tenant's, you know, standpoint, they're trying to take all the precautions they need. We've already had multiple discussions with them in reference to protecting their students. And on the landlord's side, what we're doing is making sure that the building is cleaned, you know, on a, you know, multiple, you know, basis, um, throughout the week, as well as hand sanitizers throughout the building, signage that says, please keep social distancing, wear a mask when you enter the building. And also, any contractor coming in out of the building will always have masks on as well. We have a brand-new HVAC system in each unit which has air filters throughout, and those will be changed, you know, multiple times throughout the year. So we are very serious about it. We've had discussions with them, you know, with our management team as well as our tenant's team.
Thank you. Very well.
Okay, Councilman, anything else? All right, Council, yes, is that, uh, Commissioner Sabios?
Yes. Okay, if there is to the, uh, to be any signage, any signs put outside of the building because the college is coming in.
All right. Brian, anything to share your wise on this, however, please?
You know, at this time, we do not in the front, because the front facade is historic. Uh, you know, we might have some things in the windows later on if they do opt in for that. But, you know, we, they, we're not going to, you know, damage the facade in any way. We would like it to stay so beautiful, um, for the streetscape.
Right, I know you were very, very careful to ensure that, you know, you start clocking the building was maintained at the initial phases. Uh, and again, we would, of course, abide by all sign ordinance requirements in terms of size, lettering, square footage on the building. But we expect that there will be very, very limited, as per Brian's testimony, perhaps on the windows, because remember, this is going to be a flex office space, uh, multi-tenant building as we move forward. And I wanted to point out one other thing. I mentioned Monday to Fridays, but there are also Saturday classes in the school of this nature, which is, of course, very important for students who work during the week.
Right.
Okay, thank you for those comments. Commissioner?
Thank you.
Commissioners, any other commissioners, questions?
Yes, this is, uh, Commissioner Ahmed asking a question.
Yes.
If you can hear me, check here.
Yes, Commissioner.
How do, yeah, so how would you determine that how many, what number of students can enroll? Uh, what's the number and how would you determine that by square footage or, you know, or what?
Brian, based on the square footage and the number of classrooms, obviously, there are going to be limitations regarding the COVID-19 restrictions. But the, the classrooms are designed to suit, to meet the number of students that the square footage allows. Can you elaborate at all on any other restrictions you're, you're ready to implement or are thinking about?
Yeah, you know, I think our tenants are very responsible, you know, for their welfare of their students, so they might implement their own system. And as a landlord, you know, we have already, you know, discussed with them the precautions that we're taking and that they should take. And, you know, what we've seen with other tenants we have in our portfolio is that there's been multiple, you know, kind of meetings held at different times and then classes throughout, you know, staggered kind of schedule. So we already see that going on with other tenants. And we already had a discussion with, with Pillar about that. And ultimately, it's up to the tenant, but we, like we said, they're going to, you know, do it for the benefit of their, their students as well.
Very well.
Well, thank you for the invitation. One more, one more additional question that, uh, same time in the education room and teaching at Patterson Public School. So do you think, is there any, uh, for Patterson, for the students of our city, is there going to be any special, uh, you know, special way they can get into the college? Or is it going to be open for everyone the same way they have to get in? Or is any, is any priority for our Pattersonian?
Yes.
Can you ponder?
Yes, for sure. You know, we've had, you know, numerous conversations about their enrollment and how to maintain their enrollment and grow it throughout the years. And what they want to do is have as local as possible to have students that are, you know, right in backyard. So, you know, like I said, you know, just a few moments ago, they are going to be hosting almost on a weekly basis on Saturdays, you know, kind of like a meet and greet, um, to their school, an open house of sorts, you know, um, to go through the school to see the programs that they offer. To kind of really attract people right in their backyard.
Right, and so Patterson students will be in one priority. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Madam Chair? You know, wait one second, please. Yes, okay, one second, one second, Commissioner Brooks. Okay, Commissioner Oden, did that, did that, uh, answer your question?
Yes, uh, my question was answered and thank you.
Okay, yeah, thank you very much. Okay, thank you. Commissioner Brooks? Commissioner Brooks?
Yes, I just have a question, Mr. Joyce. Yeah. Um, with this pandemic going on, uh, what, what are they looking at in terms of, I don't know if the state has, has said yet when schools were going to be back open. Is that, um, is, are you looking at, um, September, October? What, what is Pillar looking at as far as your, your, as being a tenant of yours and opening up, uh, during this pandemic? What, what, what's going on with that? Because I don't think the state has made a decision yet about schools.
Right, so, you know, Pillar would be all set up and ready to go when the state allows them to, you know, open for business. Um, you know, they also have that other component that is, you know, an incubator space with multiple kind of co-working, you know, individual offices that are blocked off for startups and, you know, nonprofits and any, any student that is opening businesses, which is great. Um, so they are getting that already. And they're also going to be having virtual classrooms, so they might have a professor in, you know, finished, nice, clean, you know, grade A office space, uh, and use it kind of as a studio space as well. And so, you know, they're, they're actually have, you know, in-person, you know, classes again.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other, any other questions, commissioners? Okay, hearing none. Mr. Joyce? Mr. Joyce? Mr. Maracanda? It's getting late.
Madam Chair, that would conclude our testimony. I will, I would just leave, uh, with the board the thought that this is an excellent opportunity to provide a quality service in the downtown area. Uh, we know that there's certainly a need for a local, uh, easily accessible, uh, higher education here in Patterson. And we welcome that, we welcome, hopefully, the opportunity here to have that provided in a state-of-the-art building, which I know many of the commissioners have seen close up or have been in. And this would be an ideal setting. We believe it meets all the criteria for site plan and variance approvals. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Motion to approve.
I'm so, I'm sorry?
I got a motion to approve.
Okay, so...
I don't want to talk all the way. Councilman Velez, uh, saying, uh, a motion to, uh, council prepare resolution granting approval for, uh, Pillar College 65 Place, New York City, or 7644. But, but, you know, my...
Continue, continue, Commissioner Sabios, continue.
111 Washington Street, Black, 4407, 921. Ordinarily 111 Washington Street, Realty, LSC, 1102, 46, E, Los Angeles, New York City.
Okay, continue.
Granting, granting, then the site grant approval for various, uh, city engineers. I want to follow our grant director, Parison Historic Preservation Division and AEP Soil Conservation District.
Thank you, Commissioner, thank you, Commissioner Sabios. Commissioner Velez, would you like to second it?
Oh, yes, if it is possible, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner, uh, Councilman Velez, second, uh, roll call, please.
Commissioners, Commissioner Ahmed? Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Sobalos?
Yes.
Commissioner Cleaves?
I'm saying.
Commissioner Fisher?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Eugene?
Yes.
Commissioner Witherspoon?
Yes.
Oh, you are there, sir? Thank you. Uh, Councilman Velez?
Trying to everything go back to normal. My vote is yes.
Uh, Commissioner Santana? Commissioner Santana?
Yes.
Thank you. Chairwoman Northrop?
Yes.
Thank you. We do have, uh, more business.
I, I just wanted to say congratulations.
Right.
Okay. Congratulations to the applicants. And commissioners, don't go anywhere. We do have more business. We have resolutions that need to be approved this evening.
May I ask the board secretary to vote?
No problem. No problem.
Yes.
Please, board secretary, please give the, uh, the vote.
Okay.
Nine affirmative. One abstaining.
Thank you very much. Good evening.
My, my, right? Not, uh, council?
Yes, yes.
Yes, yes.
And thank you for good evening.
Okay, so.
Thank you for your time. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, thank you. Good luck. Um, okay, so uh I'm gonna, so Mr. Aquaviva, are you going to be doing the resolutions this evening?
I'm sure.
Yes, um if I may interject here, I do have a resolution that I need to have approval on. I'd like to read it into the record and then um we can vote on it. This is a resolution that states whereas Javier Silva, Director of Accounts and Control, requested the planning board to estimate anticipated voting for the year of two thousand and twenty to two thousand and twenty-one to cover legal expenses by the planning board attorney in defense of existing and anticipated court cases. And whereas Mr. Silver requires an estimate to encumber funds that may later be drawn upon. Now therefore be resolved that the planning board anticipates expenditures in the amount of twenty-five thousand to cover the legal defense costs for the development, applications presently in court, and anticipation for a court defense for applications presently being earned by the planning board. Either first and a second motion, Chairwoman.
Okay. And, and for what? What, what application was this for?
This is not an application. These are to encumber funds to pay illegal, the attorney the legal fees to um anticipate costs for legal defense in the future.
Move, yeah.
Yes.
My, I prefer to, I prefer to refer to eh past precedent. Eh eh last, last year we had a review eh the total amount because of the checks that we have, that the council had a representative, planning board. If you consider the twenty-five thousand is enough, we can proceed with that and change your rate or change the number now.
Uh I'm gonna refer this to the attorney.
Madam Chair, I, I actually am uncomfortable making your recommendation on that. The way you've done it last year is there is an amount that um was just written to the record, and that's based upon existing litigation. There is no way to tell if new litigation is filed over the next course of the year. If it is, and since like that amount is going to exceed the twenty-five thousand, obviously that would have to be questioned and uh dealt with at a later date.
Correct.
Actually, yes. This is why we're doing this, so that uh the Director of Accounts can control, who has the access to these funds can increase at any time.
That's right.
Okay. Okay, so I'm gonna ask, who's going to make the motion?
I did.
I didn't hear who's I.
Oh, sorry. I, I think my voice.
Okay. I'm sorry, yeah. So Councilman Velez made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Savarios. Okay, roll call, please.
Um Commissioner Santana?
Yes.
Commissioner Ahmed?
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Savalos?
Yes.
Commissioner Cleaves?
I, I'm, I'm, I'm probably out of order, but I have a question. Do we have a discussion on this? Um.
Is this um, this is something that is done a yearly basis?
Yes.
It, it is what it is? It is something that works for this board and it is approved by the uh Council Control Division? We came to this agreement and it works. Something, it has to be encumbered before it can, you have to come up with something to cover these costs.
Exactly. I was just listening to the statement of the, of the attorney and I just wanted to know if maybe we had an analysis on, you know, you know, of, of maybe five years about how much we spent, you know, if we need to increase it or not.
That information right? That, that would be taken care of by me and the Accounts and Control Director. We would more or less know if it's gonna exceed or not. I really don't know because some years it's less, some years it's almost at twenty-five. So that's the, the number that we came up to happy medium.
Okay.
Right?
Uh, okay. Well, my vote is I'm, I'm abstaining.
Thank you. Commissioner Fisher? Commissioner Fisher?
Yes, I'm here. Yes.
Commissioner Eugene?
Yep.
Commissioner Witherspoon?
Yes.
Councilman Velez?
I think the board will use their own wisdom to not take a lot of cases to the court, so we save money. So my vote is yes.
Thank you. Chairwoman Northrop?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, now, right now, then I'm gonna go on to something asked. I'm gonna have Mr. Aquaviva, it's getting late. You wanna read, start reading those um uh the resolutions for the city, please?
Yes, yes, I will, Madam Chair. Thank you. Uh, Madam Secretary, are you ready?
I'm ready, sir.
Okay. On the application of Berthas Realty LLC for the property located at two forty-one dash two fifty-one Crips Avenue and two fifty Nickerbocker Avenue, block seven one one six, lots two and three, the property being located in the B two community uh business district. The applicant had previously received site plan approval to demolish the existing structure on the lot and construct a four-story building with refill space on the first floor and apartments on the second, third, and fourth floor. Um, and the first floor proposed commercial space encounters. The applicant's current proposal sought site plan approval on both variances to demolish the residential structure on lot three, which will add eleven parking spaces and place an eleven thousand six hundred twenty square foot supermarket to the previously untended first commercial, uh first floor commercial space. And whereas the board, excuse me, whereas the board approved this application as June eight twenty-twenty special meeting, do I have a motion?
So moved. I'll make it.
Chairwoman Northrop, you cannot vote.
I was there, no?
No. Commissioner Brooks was the acting chair at the time.
Uh, I don't know. Was it this year? I'll make the motion.
Thank you. Uh Commissioner Santana? Um, I'm sorry, a second, I'm sorry.
Oh, I was sick that evening, that's right.
Okay, Commissioner Brooks made the motion. Is there a second motion?
Second, Fisher.
Thank you. Well, Commissioner Fisher, you cannot vote. Commissioner Savalos over Santana?
Over.
Did someone make a second? Commissioner Savarios, are you there? Santana, can you make?
I'll second it. Madam Chair, I'll second it.
Commissioner Witherspoon, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Commissioners, Commissioner Santana?
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Savalos?
Yes.
And Commissioner Witherspoon?
Yes.
Thank you.
On the application, I'm sorry, on the application of Cullen Properties LLC for the property located at seventy-one dash seventy-four, Ward Sixth Street, lot four fourteen, lot six, uh, we need to.
Can somebody mute their mics? Somebody's mic is on. Please shut them off.
I'm sort of neurophobic here.
And whereas the property is located, okay, and whereas the property is located in the R eight one zone of the first floor redevelopment plan, on February fifth, twenty twenty, the application was served for the planning board, uh for a proposal to subdivide the existing five thousand square foot lot. And the applicant has now proposed revised site plans and to place a proposed whole bathroom on the same floor as the proposed senior efficiency unit and seeks reconsideration for the site plan approval. The board considered the application as June twenty, uh it's June seventeenth, twenty twenty regular meeting. Do I have a motion?
This will be on the subdivision only?
No, this is under the revised site plan.
But by, maybe you're misunderstanding something here. There's a subdivision and there's a site plan in both variants.
Right, the subdivision was previously approved. That was taken care of with the site plan.
Well, that's how it looks on here. Uh, maybe you should check your resolution because you have to vote on this.
All right, the first vote was for the subdivision, but that was old. That was February fifth.
So I don't know why it's, we'll have to be doing it. We'll be here tomorrow. Let's continue.
So moved, so moved. Second?
Second, Mr. George.
Commissioner Savarios, vote, vote. Thank you. Commissioners, Commissioner Santana? Commissioner Santana? Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Are you ready? Yes. I'm having interference again. Someone's out there. If anyone else is, is there, there you'd like to get off the um, get off the line now if you're not involved in this anymore? I do see some corners in here. So um other than the Commissioners, uh I would like you to really uh hang up or disconnect yourself from this meeting. Thank you. Um, the uh vote goes as follows. Commissioner Savalos?
Yes.
Commissioner Witherspoon?
Yes.
And Chairwoman Northrop?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, on the application, EC Property Holdings LLC for the property located at one seventy dash one seventy-six Breland Avenue, block eight oh one nine, lot two. The property being located in the R two low median density residential district. The applicant sought higher subdivision approval and site plan approval in both variants, uh to subdivide an existing five thousand eight hundred eighty-six square foot lot that presently contained a two and a half story dwelling in the two lots. Whereas the board considered this matter at June seventeen, twenty twenty regular meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Brooks. Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioners, Commissioner Santana? I, I apologize. Commissioner Brooks, you cannot vote. Commissioner Santana, would you like to second that motion?
Yes. Yeah, I would second it.
Okay, Commissioner Santana, your vote, please.
Yes.
Commissioner Savalos?
Yes.
Commissioner Witherspoon?
Yes.
And Chairwoman Northrop?
Yes.
Thank you.
On the application of JCM Investors ten twelve LLC for the property located at twelve dash sixteen Garrison Street, block six eleven, lot seven. The property being located in the R three high median density residential district. The applicant sought site plan approval and both variants to uh to construct a three-story, seven-unit residential building on a five thousand six hundred eighty, a five thousand six hundred eighty-eight square foot lot. Whereas the board approved this matter at its June fifteenth, twenty twenty special meeting. Do I have a motion?
Which resolution is this, Mr. Aquaviva?
This is JCM or Garrison Street.
Garrison Street. I don't have that one.
So moved.
Uh, we're gonna, excuse me, everyone. I don't have that one with me. Mr. Aquaviva?
Yes.
I don't have that one here with me. I don't know who voted or who did not. I have no information on her.
Okay, it's one of the ones that, that was seconded, that was to be read tonight, so I guess we can hold that off for next time.
Because I don't see it here with my other stuff, so I may not have printed it out. I apologize for that.
Okay, stay with the next meeting.
Thank you.
Please move on.
On the application of JCM Investors ten twelve LLC for the property located at twenty-two dash twenty-eight Arlington Street, block six oh two, lot sixty-five. The property being located in the R eight two zone of the first floor redevelopment plan. The applicant sought site plan approvals in both variants to remove the existing structures on the site and construct a new three-story residential building with a total of twelve units. Uh, the board considered and approved this application at June eighth, twenty twenty special meeting. Do I have a motion?
All right, so moved.
Chair, Commissioner Northrop, you cannot vote.
All right, never mind.
Second.
So moved.
So moved, so moved, so moved.
Okay, so Commissioner Brooks made the motion, Savarios, okay, seconded it. Okay, so now we're uh just do the um roll call.
Commissioners, Commissioner Santana?
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioners Savalos?
Yes.
And Commissioner Witherspoon?
Yes.
Thank you.
On the application of JCM Investors ten twelve LLC for the property located at one twenty-one Pier Street, one forty-eight, one fifty straight street, one fifty-two, one fifty-four straight street, blocks three six one five, lots seven eight nine. The property being located in the R eight two zone of the fourth floor redevelopment plan. The applicant sought site plan approval in both variants to construct a four-story residential building with parking on the ground level and three floors of residential units above. The matter has been heard before this board and approved on, at the June fifteenth, twenty twenty special meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Savalos, you cannot vote. Anyone else?
Sorry about that.
It's okay.
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Santana, roll call, please. Commissioners, Commissioner Santana?
Yes.
Commissioner Ahmed? Yes? Commissioner Ahmed?
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher?
Yes.
And Chairwoman Northrop?
Yes.
Thank you.
On the application.
I was able to vote.
No, you were not here, sir.
Okay.
Okay, Madam Secretary?
Yes, yes, continue, sir.
Uh, the application of Curly Janelle for the property located in nine sixty-nine dash nine seventy-three East Twenty Seventh Street, block eight nine one zero, lot twenty-five. The property being located in the R two low median density residential district. The applicant sought um minor subdivision approval, site plan approval, and both variants is to subdivide the existing seventy-five hundred square foot lot that presently contained one unit into exist, to two-story dwelling in the two lots. Whereas the board heard and considered this matter and approved this application at its June seventeenth, twenty twenty regular meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Commissioner Brooks cannot vote.
Second.
Is that Commissioner Ahmed?
Yes.
He cannot vote either. It could be Santana, Savalos, or Witherspoon.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Savarios. Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner Santana?
Yes.
Commissioners Savalos?
Yes.
Commissioner Witherspoon?
Yeah, yeah.
And Chairwoman Northrop?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, um this is gonna be a little long. Um, the application of Hinchcliffe Master Urban Renewal LP for the property located at one eighty-six dash two eighteen Maple Street, block eight oh one, lot six, one dash twenty-seven Jasper Street, block eight oh one, lot seven, the St. Paul's Track, block eight oh one, lot twenty-three. Uh, whereas the, that application was made by Hinchcliffe Urban Renewal to demolish an existing one-story structure on lot six and construct a two-story multi-use building. I'm sorry, I lost my place. I'm sorry. No, go on, sir.
Mr. Aquaviva?
Yes? Um, I sent you an email late in the day. I don't know if you had a chance to look at it. The attorney for the, the applicant took a look at the resolution and made some comments. So I think we're, we're gonna have to postpone a vote on this resolution for tonight.
Okay, take, yeah, move on.
Okay, uh and that would be the last one. What did you do?
What's the last one?
At one event, yes.
Okay. So that being said, there's no more uh resolutions for this evening. Uh, Mr. George, should we have any other business this evening?
Yes, we do. Um, I have a request for a special meeting. The applicant is proposing a, a subdivision and a sub-story building.
Who is it? Oh, I'm sorry.
Uh, on the Route twenty corridor area, the approximate location of the Taylor Door Building. They, you um, they need to close on a contract and have requested uh that the planning board review their application. Um.
When day?
Uh, Monday, August the third. Just, just one special meeting for that night.
Who's the applicant?
Who is the applicant? Yeah. One moment, sir. When they put the application for it, too.
I have a question for you. On Curly Janelle on I sixty-nine East Twenty Seventh, you have a site plan in both and then you have a minor subdivision. You have two votes. Did you proceed with that one? As, separately or you're gonna do them as a whole? Some kind of lost.
I, I did them in, I did them in one resolution, but with two, with two vote counts, right?
Yes, but remember that Councilman Velez uh voted on the minor subdivision, but not on the application. That's why I didn't have that vote in the vote. But let me leave it alone for now.
Councilman Velez?
Councilman Velez? He, he wasn't on the court.
He was, he, he.
No, I, I voted for uh the money to pay for um the attorney to go to court.
Yeah, it was my mistake. I'm sorry. My mistake.
Okay, so, so Michael, so Mr. George, okay. So uh who is the applicant? Okay?
Nelson LLC, three eighteen McQueen Boulevard. Is Mr. Marakanda still um?
No.
Still here?
No.
This is Mr. Marakanda's client. Um.
When did he put the application for a special meeting?
It was put in um probably in February or March, but it's gone through some revisions. Wasn't really sure which board was gonna be eligible to hear it. They made some changes. They made it eligible to be a planning board application.
August, what are you planning to?
August third, which is a Monday evening.
I don't have any issue. I don't think we're gonna. So what is the board's pleasure? I mean, are we okay with this?
Yeah, I'm good. I'm good. Chairwoman Northrop?
Yes.
I don't know if it won't be available that day, that Monday, August third, it will be in town.
Okay, how is the rest of the board? Can they make it that night? I need a call on.
Yes.
I have no problem with it.
Okay. Commissioner Witherspoon, Commissioner Savarios, yes?
That won't be the third?
Yes.
All right.
All right, all right. Put it on.
Thank you. And we'll be at our next meeting. The board, um, there are no more meetings the rest of July. I'll see you Monday, August third, Commissioners. Thank you very much. Just wanted to thank everyone for their, their hard work over the past year. I didn't get a chance to do it at our June meeting. I appreciate all of you being here and your hard work and your time devoted to hearing these applications and listening to the testimony. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I would also like to see someone, I would like to see someone, I guess it would come from your office. Um, Mr. George, maybe? Okay, uh, the suggestion uh that Councilman Velez made about maybe increasing uh the uh, the um, the money that we get. Money that we get, okay, with these meetings.
Yes.
Okay, all right, so, okay, that being said, I guess that's it, motion to close, I make the motion?
Move it, second, third, fourth.
And my Commissioner, okay, okay, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Good night. Good night, yeah.
Good night, good night.